Again, good evening and welcome to the City of Leon Valley City Council Regular Meeting. Today's Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, and it's approximately 6:01 in the evening. And as you can see, all city council members are present. We do have a quorum, and I'm going to ask Counselor Phillip Campos to please lead us in the pledge, if you'll please stand. Thank you.
(Inaudible)
Agenda item number two, citizens to be heard. Is there any one in our chambers that would like to address the council at this time? Please come forward, state your name, and just generally where you live, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Good evening, Drew, and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Drew. I live in my house. She said generally.
Yeah, okay, just generally, in the area, in Leon Valley.
I live in Leon Valley, in Forest Oaks. I had just two general questions, and I should probably bring them up with the police chief, but I noticed the 35 mile an hour speed limit on Heebner sign has moved beyond the city limit to the other side of the school zone, the flashing. And there's nothing between the City of San Antonio's 45 mile an hour speed limit and Leon Valley's 35 mile an hour speed limit between those sections until you get to almost just up to the church right there, heading westbound?
That would be west, yeah.
And it's kind of concerning because traffic is zipping through there at like 50 miles an hour. The only reason why I'm aware of it is I just started working at USAA, so that's like my main thoroughfare now. And I was just wondering, is it 35 miles an hour up to the sign, or is it still at the city limit? And then the other concern I have that's been brought to my attention by Comfort Cafe is the adult care facility right next to them on the other side of the alley. Their wooden fence has become so dilapidated and rotted that it is now collapsing and falling both into their property and into the alleyway. And they were concerned about who to address that, and they reached out to me. I have since found out who I need to speak to, but it's becoming not only an eyesore, but a hazard over there. Other than that, I want to thank the council. I'm sorry it's been so long since I've been in your presence. I appreciate you all being here and everything you're doing for the city.
Congratulations on your new job. I was just going to ask you how the collision was going in, the...
Still in collision, but now I'm on the other side. I'm joined the dark side.
Okay, all right. Well, wonderful. Congratulations. So happy for you. All righty. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Blackmore.
My name is Richard Blackmore. I live in Leon Valley, great state of Texas. Very upset, I was watching the previous council meeting, and about the antenna that's going down here, and all the letters that were sent out. That's the same excuse I've been hearing the last five or six years. When I was on the committee, people'd come in and say they never got a letter. We didn't get letters here, we're blaming the post office. Well, I'm wondering, why are we... The post office, United States Post Office? They have a grudge against Leon Valley? I don't think so. They deliver my mail on time. They pick it up on time. Something's going on. As Mr. Burris said here in his speech up here, and I'm in agreement with him, something's going on. Something's been helped. It has to do with our city manager, our police, or whatever it is. Something's going on. It needs to be fixed. It needs to be fixed right away. That's all I got to say right now. And I got a lot more to say than other things you got.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blackmore.
Mayor, I wanted to address...
City manager.
Sorry.
Caldera, no, that's okay.
I wanted to address Drew Powers. I'll make sure that his claim gets turned into code enforcement, and then I'll check with Melinda on the sign placement. But it technically is the speed up until you hit the sign. But it may just be placed wrong, so we may have to move it back. But I will double-check with that.
Very good.
That was it.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, we are now moving to presentations. Presentation 3.1, Presentation and Discussion on Amending Ordinance Article 4.14, Short-Term Rental to Include a Definition for Block Face, Increasing the Distance Requirement to 300 Feet, and Amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Increasing the Registration Fee to $200. This is the first read as required by city charter, which means we will not vote on this this evening. And I believe Dr. Caldera will present, and we'll have a discussion. And then, as you can see on our agenda, the council will move into executive session after we have the presentation and hear from our citizens for some legal advice, and then come back out. So with that said, Dr. Caldera, would you like to begin?
Good evening, Mayor and council. So again, after I give the presentation and after we hear from the citizens, before we even start discussion, we need to go into executive session. So I just want to make sure that the procedures are correct. So again, after our last discussion, this was between Campos and Ms. Hile to look at amending the ordinance for short-term... Sorry, I was at the timer.
And just, I might add, just those people that are coming in late and online, we are on emergency power this evening due to the weather, and so we will not have a PowerPoint presentation on the screen until it comes back. And so, please bear with us, we appreciate your patience with this.
So everybody at home is seeing the PowerPoint.
Okay, great.
Y'all are seeing the PowerPoint. The only thing that is not working here is the projector.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So I just want to make that clear.
Very good.
And so Mr. Campos presented on July 15th and asked for input. And so what was asked was that we add a definition for block face. And so this is the definition we came up with. One side of the city block, specifically the distance along one side of the street between two consecutive intersections or between an intersection and the end of the dead-end street. When a street is a circle or a semicircle with no intersection, the entire street is considered one block face. He's requesting that the distance requirement go up from 200 to 300, and the registration fee go from 25 to 200. The increase of the registration fee would be the 25 to 200. And again, it's council's discretion, but those are the only changes as of right now that are included in your packet. And so you can open it up for citizens to hear.
All right, so is, are there any citizens in the chambers that would like to address the short-term rental issue this evening before the council goes into executive session for legal advice? So again, very simple, just three bullet points, the increase of the registration fee, the increase in the distance, and the definition of block face as per the attorney's recommendation. Okay, seeing no one then, at this time, 6:09, we will move into executive session, and I'll read the caption pursuant to Texas Local Government Code Section 551.071, Consultation with the Attorney Regarding Said Ordinance Amendments. So we are pausing, and we'll be back as soon as we get our advice. Thank you. Okay, thank you all very much for your patience. It is now 6:44, and we have reconvened into regular session. And we do have a suggested amendment to the short-term ordinance that we have been discussing.
Dr. Caldera, I'd like to make a recommendation that we strike the modification to the distance requirement and just keep it to the original...
200 feet.
200 feet that we had on the original ordinance.
Okay, so that will be on the September 2nd agenda? And would the council like for that to be in the consent agenda or for discussion?
I'm okay with that.
Consent agenda, okay, very good. I'll make a note of that then. All right, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to ask the council, Mr. Jornell? Yes, sir? I'm sorry, I was just going to ask the council if we could move an agenda item up. Is there something that you wanted to talk about on...
On this item.
On the short-term rental?
Yes.
Oh, we had a public hea... No, we didn't have a public hearing, did we?
Public comments.
We had public comments before we went into executive session.
And I made a decision, made a...
Okay, go ahead. Come on, we'll listen to you. Go ahead, just very briefly, yeah, go ahead. And good evening, Mr. Jornell. We're glad you're here and you weathered the storm.
You just announced your decision of what you made in the executive session. I got a green light if that not worked.
Yes, sir. You missed the presentation. There were three bullet points. Number one, to increase the registration fee from $25 to $200, to increase the distance between the short-term rentals from 200 to 300 feet, and to add a definition for block face. Those were the three things that we were considering for the amendment. And so Mr. Campos has now come back and amended that ordinance to say no longer, we're going to strike the distance requirements and just keep it at 200.
So my question was about the distance. Why were we going for 300, and now we've erased that and going for 2?
As per our attorney... Well, we had a consultation with our attorney.
Okay.
That's, well, unless somebody... Yeah, that's the answer. I mean, that's why we have an attorney. He gives us good legal advice, so that's what we decided. Okay, but thank you so much, I appreciate you wanting to know more. All right, so if there's no objection from the council, could we please move Agenda Item Number 11.2 next? And we do have a representative from the American Legion here, and he would be sitting through the whole meeting before we got to him. If there's no objection, let me go ahead and move, then there's no objection, to 11.2, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on an In-Kind Grant Request by American Legion Number 336 for a 9/11 Ceremony. And we have Crystal Miranda, our Community Relations Director, here this evening to present. Good evening and welcome. I see we don't have our PowerPoint yet. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council, thank you.
Good evening.
Yes, the PowerPoint, or the projector's not working still.
Still not working, okay, thank you.
But the slides are online. So here today, we have Commander, First Class Commander, I'm sorry, First Class Commander in our presence today to answer any questions, presenting to you an in-kind grant request on behalf of American Legion. Your options are to approve of waiving all the fees associated with the half-day rental at the conference center as requested in the application, approve the rental as per the in-kind grant application policy only, or allow a selection of waivers per council discretion, or you can deny or other. The Leon Valley American Legion Number 336 has requested an in-kind grant for the use of the Leon Valley Conference Center on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, for the 9/11 remembrance event. This request includes a waiver of all fees. The event will begin at 5:00 PM and end at 8:30 PM. The setup will begin at 4:30 PM on the same day of the event. On September 4th in 2018, City Council voted to require deposit, no longer waive cleanup costs, no longer waive security, and add a setup fee which would be the same as a cleanup fee, and do not waive the fee at the discretion of each application coming to council. The in-kind grant committee members evaluated this request based on the criteria outlining the grant policy and guidelines. The maximum score is 24, a score of 18 usually is recommended for approval. The committee scored a median average of 13.65 on this request. Your fiscal impact would be a half-day rental, a refundable deposit, a cleanup fee of $145, and a security of $110. Total fees that you're looking at waiving tonight is $975. At your discretion, would you like to do?
Okay, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Stacy, would you like to come up and introduce yourself and add to what Crystal Miranda said?
So thank you. This is my first address to city council, and my name is Garrett Stacy. I'm the First Vice Commander of Audiel Murphy, American Legion 336. We operate here in Leon Valley and proud supporter of what we do for not only our legion but our community, and that's what we're all about. For the in-kind grant, this is a proposed request as we do a remembrance annually to commemorate those that have served before as well as after 9/11. But it was a significant event for our country, something that we want to carry on year to year, and just ask that we pass this in-kind grant.
Okay, very good. Let me open it up for discussion. Yes, Counselor Marsh.
So can you have any idea of how many people you expect to attend this event?
Typically, as last year was my first year presiding over it, we had roughly 50 people that did attend. That included anybody from fire, local police, community members, we had some of the council members that attended. We also had a proclamation of Audiel Murphy Day. So generally, 50 would be a rough estimate of what we had in attendance last year.
Can I ask one more?
Yes, you sure may.
So how do you publicize this event? What are your audiences that you're looking for, that you're sending out information that this is happening?
Typically, it goes out to our members. We have over 592 members as part of the Leon Valley Veterans Club. So primarily, it goes out via postcard, email, as well as social media posts that we put out on our own social media.
Thank you. And I do provide it to myself, and we put it on our website as well.
Okay, thank you. We help, in other words, we help publicize it as well.
Yeah. And targeted audience, to answer that question for you, would be anybody of Leon Valley or the surrounding area that would like to come and participate in that. It's not exclusion criteria or anybody excluded from participating.
Okay, yes, thank you very much. Counselor Orozco.
Thank you, Mayor. They also advertise on Facebook through... One of the things that 9... Everybody can almost remember what they were doing during 9/11 when it happened. And one of the battle cries that they did was that "We will never forget. Let's never forget all the 5,000-plus people that died." And I thank the American Legion for trying to keep that memory, even though it's a sad memory, to let us know that as Americans, you know, we suffered this on 9/11, and you guys continue to do this. I know it's a small... I've gone before, and we've had 75 to 100 people there. And now we have an advertisement that I think we get free at the billboard, and I'll talk to Dr. Caldera about that to see if we were, you know, eligible for that. They said they would do it free, but we'll see, we'll try to cross that to continue. I think that 9/11, I think about it every time, and it could have been anybody that had passed away, and the children that were left. And again, I'll just close it up and say that thank you for wanting to do this. It's not easy. It's very emotional when you guys do this. And I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay with my colleagues, that we approve 11.2. And...
As presented, okay. And, okay, we have a motion for, by Counselor Orozco, and a second by Counselor Campos, to approve 11.2. Yes, we're going to get further discussion on providing the in-kind grant to the American Legion. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Okay, so my thought process is they're coming back every year, and we've been doing this event for, gosh, I mean, for a long time. And so I don't know if y'all just want to budget for this event, because we don't have it in our budget. I've got to pay overtime for the people to be there. We've got to pay for people to clean. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying we keep doing this every year, then I've got to find the money to make the coverage, and so we know it's coming. They actually miss their deadline for the application. Instead of telling them, they miss the deadline for the application. Sorry, too bad, so sad. We let them miss the deadline for the application almost every year. And so they come late to the game every single year, but we let them because we know it's been a longstanding event. And so either they've got a, we've got, we're going to be stronghold and say your application needs to be in when it's supposed to be in, or we need to just say, okay, this is going to be a, you know, a city event, you know, or, you know, one of those things that we just say, so they don't have to keep coming back every year, and we just doesn't have to be a continuous agenda item every year, and we just budget appropriately for it.
Okay, how much are we talking about?
What Crystal said, it's really more not the rental piece, it was the staff time, so it's the 150 cleanup, and I forgot the other number.
Right, I think I said...
$110 for security?
Or, yeah, so...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it's the cost breakdown of like, security... Yeah, so, go ahead.
So when you're talking about after hours, right? I'm an exempt employee, so I'm there after hours, but that doesn't matter. But you have your on-time patrol officers that attend the event that are there instead of in the streets. You have your fire that are there instead of responding to calls. And but, other than that, you have your $150, $145 cleanup fee, then, or unless we contract security out, which is the cost that I presented to you today, which is $110, for them to actually come open, lock up the site as well. So those are for sure hard costs, but the other costs I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, yes, Counselor Orozco.
The police are there, and so is the fire department, not there to protect them but to honor them for what they've done, and not so much that they're, and if, and if it's a hassle or a problem where they're not, should, cannot be there and should be on the streets, well, then, that's fine. But they're not there to patrol the area, they're there to be honored.
Yeah, so, so the cost that I'm concerned with is the overtime for public works. Public works is the one that has to set up and take down. Police and fire normally go when they're on duty, so to me, that's, that's not a cost if they, because they've left the event. They've gotten calls and they've, they haven't stayed for the event. They've left the event.
I've seen them go.
So my, my concern was more the public works. And so I think the last time I gave an estimation for this event that I gave to y'all on, on paper at, I don't know, the retreat, the actual hard cost for it, I think, was almost like $800 for public works. And that's more of like when the event, when they're doing it on a Saturday or Sunday, because if it's during the week, then public works can set up, so then it's just the cleanup and takedown costs that's the real issue. I just need to know, because each year will be different, but then I will just put it in your FY budget, and then they don't have to keep coming back every year.
Certainly, okay. Counselor Campos.
I would rather see them, see us put it in our budget.
Okay.
I don't foresee the council, and this is just my opinion...
Right.
...that my fellow councils are ever going to come and say, no, we're not going to approve this. So we just need to budget for it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. So y'all still will vote this evening on this item? I just want a clarification, so then I can add it for your FY '26 budget, but it's not going to be a substantial amount. We'll just add that line item in there.
And we had...
And then subsequent budgets, I can do that for you ahead of time.
Okay, very good. Yes, Mr. Blackmore.
My name is Richard Blackmore, I'm a citizen of the state of Texas. I'm a life member of the Legion, and I belong to this particular post. Also, I'm a life member of the VFW, a life member of the DAV, Disabled American Veterans, and a life member of the Security Police Association. These people come back every year, asking for the city to waive all these fees. This city is hurting for funds. They've got enough people in the Legion with money, they can pay for it. All they have to do is take up a collection. We got celebrations for 9/11. I was involved in five wars, so I don't know how important it is. But you got the VFW out in Holotus, you got the Legion on Fredericksburg Road celebrating. This city is hurting. Save the money, let them pay for the convenience of using the convention center. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this side of the dais have anything to add? Yes, Ms. Marsh.
I...
Counselor Marsh.
Given the state of the budget and the events that we have canceled for future budgets, I would be more in favor of coming up with a compromise position where they pay some reduced fees, or they pay the setup and cleanup, or the public works costs, but not some of the other fees. I think that, that there's a little bit of truth to say, we don't have a lot of money for events, and we're canceling things that are important to us as citizens, just as 9/11 is important to us as citizens. So I would be more in favor of seeing some compromise of the fees and not waiving the total fees, and have a mixture of them contributing some to the, for the use of the conference center or the community center.
Okay, all right. Well, we do have a motion pending to waive all fees, so we do have another citizen that would like to speak to this issue. Go ahead, Mr. Power.
I absolutely appreciate the accommodation, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes, you bet.
So, yes, with Councilmember Marsh's proposal, I find myself kind of in agreement of it moving forward. However, since this has been a trend, the term is camel nose in the tent for legal purposes. This is an important year for our U.S. military, police, fire, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Space Force. Many of our forces are celebrating their 250th anniversary this year, and every one of those members are a part of this organization. And it's kind of become a routine that we have agreed to waive this. Whether it's expected or not, this is the year to honor them for their service, because, because they went before us. We are all still sitting here tonight. Moving forward, whether we make it a line item in the budget, or if we make consolidations moving forward, I 100% agree. We are struggling. We can set the precedent starting next year. This is an important anniversary this year for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers.
And I'm okay with that. We'll go ahead and start establishing some rules and regulations for them to do it on time and maybe meet us halfway. And if it's that big of a deal, I'll pay for it. But at this time, like Drew had indicated, it's a time to honor them.
Okay, all right. So you want to keep your motion, and you're second, and so we'll go ahead and vote on it. But thank you, Ms. Marsh, what would you like to add?
So I, I would agree with the, the motion that's on the table right now, but I'd like to amend that motion to say, effective in our next budget year, that we come up with a compromise where they pay half of the fees or half of the total fee, whether it's broken, how it's broken down, and the rest is put in as an event line item in the budget.
I'm okay with that amendment.
All right, so we'll have to withdraw, right? And, yes, and then just restate it.
Okay, make a motion for 11.2, that we waive the fees of 975 with the future impact of having us to review them to pay, to meet us halfway as far as expenditures are concerned for the next budget.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion by Counselor Orozco and a second by Counselor Campos to approve the in-kind grant request for $975 for this year's event in September, but for FY '27 to consider splitting the cost between the city and the American Legion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Thank you so much, Mr. Stacy, really appreciate you being here, and we look forward to the event on 9/11. All righty, great, thank you. All right, so then we'll move back to Presentation 7.1, Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2026 Budget. And we have Dr. Crystal Caldera, our city manager, to present this evening. And Dr. Caldera, again, how do you want to do it? I know we've been, this is, I don't know how many times this has been, maybe seven times we've looked at the budget, but now it's changed, because we have a rate, and so we're able to apply the rate. But if you have a question, we'll go ahead and take it. Is that how you'd like to do it again?
Yes, and so I, my plan for this budget was to zoom through it. I'm hitting the changes.
Right.
So I'm not going through all the cuts and stuff again.
Right.
We've gone through that, like you said, multiple times. The cuts haven't changed, and what we've changed in the budget hasn't changed, so at any point, if I have gone too fast, whether from the audience or the people on the
whether from the audience or the people on the dais, if you could just please just wave at.
Raise your hand and I'll recognize you, yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll start at seven oh five.
Okay, so we move forward with the organizational chart and the general fund. You're sitting at five point seven million in your capital fund reserve with one point two in your emergency fund, leaving you with an estimate total of six point nine million, um, which is roughly about five point six months of operating income. Um, this budget that I'm presenting this evening has a surplus of sixty-three thousand, seven sixty-six. You have, um, decreased your overall revenues by ten thousand, two oh seven from last year. Um, this budget does have an increased property tax rate of point five one, which was one cent over your no new, no new revenue rate as presented at the last meeting. Um, your market values have decreased by forty-six thousand. The increase of the average home in Leon Valley would pay the city of Leon Valley in property tax levy, um, eleven hundred eighty-six dollars. Um, this was the property evaluation loss, as you can see here, property evaluations according to Bear County. This chart is from Bear County, not the city of Leon Valley, is roughly forty-six million dollars. You see the biggest hit in your multifamily residential area. Um, this is your tax history, you are going, you were at, sitting at point five three and twenty-two. You reduced your tax rate in twenty-three to point five eight, you've held that for the last two years. Um, the increase or the proposed increase would be point five one, five zero, four zero. This gives you an increase in your ad valorem tax of eighty-four thousand dollars, your sales tax of seventy-five thousand. Um, all of the rest of your, um, fees have gone down, um, with the exception of your EMS revenue. You are trending in the upwards position. Um, this is just a breakdown of all of your revenue sources and your biggest one is of course, property tax. Your expenditure highlights, we have decreased your expenditures by three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Your capital expenditures for this year have decreased by seven hundred and nine thousand. Uh, your biggest expenditures are of course, personnel costs. Um, and if you break it down, your highest one is in public safety. Uh, this is a summary chart, this breaks down all of your revenue sources. You can take a look at your total resources of sixteen million dollars, um, and your total expenditures of seventeen million. But just as a reminder, if you take a look at your total resources of the sixteen million, you're going to have to take out one point two for your hike and bike, two hundred and sixty-five thousand for your ARPA funds, leaving your total operating revenue at fourteen million, eight seventy-seven, six fifteen. On your expenditure side, you will be taking out, you have your personnel services, of course, your supplies and your contractual services, um, leading your expenditures at fourteen million, eight thirteen, um, which gives you an overage of sixty-three thousand, seven sixty-six. Um, so that sixty-three thousand, um, this is a question for the council, what would you like to do? Would you like to do a modified Fourth of July, um, add the mass notification system? Um, give the fire department, uh, line items thirty thousand dollars, um, the fire hydrant and host testing fifty thousand. Parks and maintenance, um, uh, needed twelve thousand, like, we, we basically took twelve thousand out of their line items. Add the court day back, add the court days back, would increase about twenty-two thousand. Add the whole sixty-three thousand into your reserve account. Um, we can start moving people over from your red light camera, so you could take a look at just moving your cashiers over or finance personnel over, um, those are the costs associated with those. Um, add Juneteenth would be roughly about twenty-six thousand.
Well, we need to add the American Legion.
It'll be a couple of hundred dollars.
I know, but.
Yeah, I mean, but that, yeah.
That's off of the sixty-three, yeah, so eight hundred dollars, but still, we need to put it in there, right? Because it's not in the budget, isn't that what you told me?
We pay our cashier seventy thousand.
It's two cashiers.
Oh, two cashiers, okay.
That two cashiers over there and it's a, and it's a, and it, so you're looking at total benefit courses. Your, your cashiers make a little over twenty dollars an hour, I think one makes twenty-one and one makes twenty, seventy-nine an hour, once you add in all their benefits and stuff, um, and they're split. And so your cashiers are sitting over there at sixty-nine thousand dollars. Um, and so, or your finance, we pay a portion of their salaries out of red light cameras, so we would move their portions over, um, or your, um, or the Juneteenth holiday, um, or, I don't know. So these were some of the things that we, that have come up in the discussion of what that needs to be done or what was taken out of the budget and so how you can apply the sixty-three thousand, seven sixty-six. Um, again, you can move it into your reserve account, um, you don't have to, you don't have to allocate it if you don't want to. Um, I would really like to add the mass notification system, the geofence that we discussed at the last meeting.
I'd like to also hear from the citizens, uh, as to what they would like to, to hear.
So you also, at the very beginning, I went over what you have in your capital, um, so there's, there's a couple of questions I need answered this evening. One, what do you want to do with the sixty-three thousand? The second question is, I would like to start assigning funds of the five point seven million dollars you have sitting in your reserve fund. So whether it's the two hundred thousand a year to go towards your Forest Oaks pool, just in case we get the grant, whether it's two hundred thousand a year for your ambulance, whether it's both. Um, you allocate two hundred thousand to go towards the Forest Oaks pool for potential grant, uh, application or two hun- and two hundred thousand for your ambulance, or something of that nature that was discussed at, early on in the budget process, what you would like to start doing with that reserve dollar amount, if you would like to start assigning those funds. Um, so that's question number two, and then the, um, there was one more question and it escaped me, so we can, we can ask everybody else.
But do you want us, you don't want us to do that tonight, though?
Yes, you do.
Oh, you want us to do that?
We're already at the end, you've got September second, September nineteenth, you have to make a decision on what you want to do. I mean, you can come back on September the second, but.
That's right.
But I, I mean, you, I mean, we've been going over this budget, you should have really, already have some idea.
Well, I have some ideas, but I, again, I just, yeah, no, 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 go ahead, uh, Ms. Marsh, go ahead.
I would be in favor of, of hitting some of the maintenance, uh, costs that we were concerned about. I agree with the mass notification system, I agree with the fire department's repair, uh, line item, the, and the parks maintenance. I would rather hit some of these and spread the money out, uh, across a number of departments rather than putting it, you know, all towards moving a cashier from the red light camera or something. That would, the maintenance issues are my main concern.
Okay, um, I guess we can just go around the dais, Mr. Orozco.
Hold on, hold on, thank you.
I know, see, I was saying, I didn't know where.
I'm okay with.
Okay, well, okay.
You can come back to me, I.
Okay, let me come back to you, yes, Ms. Bolton.
I would like to hear from the fire department and find out what exactly those repair line items are and find out what their order of importance are.
No, they're not, they're, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, I understood that we had a hundred thousand budgeted, but Dr. Caldera.
Thousand budgeted, they asked.
No, but you had a hundred and you reduced it to seventy, and so it's now thirty left, that's all.
What we took away, okay.
What we took away, and they're just trending that way, things just break in the fire department. I mean, your ambulance, you, I mean, this year alone, I think we had like a alternator transmission go out in the ambulance and so we've got to send it out, and so those are just things that go out. You have equipment in the firehouse that, I mean, I could have a washing machine go out, I mean, there's just so many things that, and it's not just a regular washing machine for clothes, it's their bunker gear washing machine, it's a wholly di- it's a different thing. And so, um, you just have things that go wrong.
Okay.
In the fire department, so that's what that is, so it's not dedicated funds, that's why I did reduce it, um, in the original budget, because it wasn't dedicated dollars, but they are trending in the hundred thousand dollar direction.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, yes, Counselor Heil.
If the money's put in the reserve fund, then people can come back and you can pull that money out for emergencies, is that correct?
That is correct.
I like saving my money, I put it in the reserve fund.
Okay, all right, Counselor Campos.
Uh, I'd like to make the suggestion, I'd like to go with the, the mass notification of sixty-five hundred dollars, uh, the fire department repair of thirty thousand and the park maintenance. I, I think that, I don't know if twelve thousand is enough to add back. I think there may be more money that, because that was the hardest hit department.
Sure.
Of all the departments from my recollection, and I think we need to restore some of the cuts from there.
So twelve thousand was what I reduced that line item by, and so that's why I put it down there. That one specific line item, park maintenance. She still has other park maintenance miscellaneous dollars sitting in her account. This was the, this is specific line item, I reduced it by twelve, so I'm just.
Right, and, and I, I know that when we made these cuts, we went with the approach that if something breaks, so sad, too bad.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I don't think that our citizens really want to adopt that approach. I don't think it's bad for, for the image of the city, so I'd like to increase that, uh, so, for the remaining balance. So it would come up to somewhere close to twenty-six and change, because I'd like to add, uh, the eight hundred dollars for the VFW. Um, you know, I think that's, that's kind of high, I, I think it's really going to be like three hundred dollars.
Probably.
Two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
It's two hundred and fifty, it's two hundred and fifty-five, but depending on the day at length, I have to go, that's the only reason I didn't want to.
It's a Thursday, I think.
Is it a Thursday for next year?
The eleventh, because the twelfth is a Friday, that's hog wild.
Regular overtime, it would, so if it falls on a Saturday or Sunday, looking at time and a half.
It's a Thursday.
So it's probably closer to like three hundred dollars.
So I, I'd like to just allocate three hundred dollars to that and then the sixty-five for the mass notification. I do think that, that's an important item, restore the thirty thousand and then the, the balance to be in the, the, uh, park maintenance. That's my input.
Okay, um, yes, go ahead, Mr. Rosco, you're next, and I'll go last, go ahead.
Okay. Dr. Cardeta, as far as court days are concerned, uh, do we have a backlog, uh, a severe backlog on it?
No, we don't have a backlog, they just work all day. I mean, it's just kind of one of those, you go from, you know, right now, they're working on court, court days are probably about half a day, they'll just be going the full day, those days.
Yeah, I, I like, um, Campos' recommendation as well. Um, I was just going to go with the fire department repairs and put the rest in the bank. Uh, that was going to be my suggestion.
All right, thank you. Uh, for those of you, about the mass notification, uh, Dr. Caldera brought that up at the last meeting and that would be, uh, if we had a severe flood or, uh, emergency, we would get that, uh, notification for, for, for everybody in the city, and that seemed to me to be a very important, uh, element that we might need to consider, so I agree with that. The repairs are, are, are good as well. Um, I just remember at the coffee, we had several people come up about the Fourth of July for next year, because it is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth annual, not that I'm, you know, but anyway, I just wanted to make that note, that's what we heard from the citizens, so I don't know, uh, how the council, but, um, I don't mind saving it too, because, uh, I think that's how we, you were presenting it, Dr. Caldera, on the budget was like, for instance, on the fire department repairs, okay, we'll, we'll budget seventy thousand, but if we need more, we just come to the reserve fund. So maybe that's what we ought to do, so I don't know, that's, that's just a thought, but anyway. But we do want to hear from you, and this is the only thing I was, uh, prepared for. Now, the five point seven, you didn't tell us that we had to do that tonight, so. Oh, here, Bill, 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 you need to come to the podium. Yeah, come, come to the podium and, 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 and speak if you'd like to, and so good to see you. This is Bill Standard, Standard who lives on, stir up.
Yep.
How are you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Good to see you.
Give you fifty dollars, because I'll save that on Trazodone that I'll save on my dogs, so I'll give you fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars for what?
Trazodone on my dogs.
Okay. For the Fourth of July, oh, okay, never mind, I'm just, but I'm not sure about that, I'm just saying, we just heard from people at the coffee, that's all, I just didn't want them, and they're not here tonight, so. And I didn't realize it was the two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration next, next summer, so. Hi, Mr. Yornel, how are you?
Well, I have two pages of questions.
Three minutes.
Talking about geofencing.
Geofencing, yes.
Can we use that for zoning cases based on the issue that we have currently going on on Pos-, uh, Elverde Road, because they didn't get notifications by mail?
Yeah, that's a, Dr. Caldera, a question.
I don't, so the whole idea is for people to pay attention to the mass notification. What we heard during the Kendall County incident was that people turn off their mass notifications because they get them so frequently and they don't take them seriously. So my pitch for the sixty-five hundred, that we would be adding as an ongoing cost to the budget, would be like, we would only use this notification system for an actual emergency. So that way, it isn't just zoning or all of this information. We do have GoGov and we do have the E-News. All people have to do is just sign up for those notifications and you will get them on your phone, you will get any of those important information that you, that you need. Now, I do not know why people did not get their mailouts for zoning, we, we don't know why. The, our water bill is the same thing, we didn't even mail out the water bills, quadrant mails out their water bills. They were sent on the eighteenth and they didn't get them till almost three weeks later. I'm not blaming the post office, but I, we don't have mail services here, the post office is where we put them. Um, and so I, all I know is they go in the mailbox, we, we print them out, we have, I have the log for the postage, we have the addresses that got sent out as was provided to the council. We spent the postage, so I know staff did it, um, I have the post, postage mark timestamp on the postage. Um, I don't know if since then, if they have received it, kind of like the water bills, like if they got them three weeks later. Like, I haven't heard any, I haven't talked to Mr. Badetta or Mr. Hody to see if they got them now. Um, so I wouldn't want to use the geofence mass notification system for that. Melinda is going to be getting Doppler, um, which we are doing now, um, and that, we'll be able to be able to use that, um, but for our water customers, it's on the water side, it's the enterprise fund. And so we will be able to, um, instead of going door to door, we'll be able to, um, select the homes to get those notifications. Um, and so it's, we're trying it out, we're trying a company out, and so that's what we're doing this year. And we're using the enterprise fund, uh, to be able to do that. And so it was a forty-five hundred dollar expense for this year as part of one of our softwares to try out. And so we just, we're doing a, a one-time tryout to see, it takes our guys a day and a half to go door to door for cutoff day. And so we don't have enough water people to do that anymore. Um, so the answer to that is, I wouldn't recommend, you probably could, but I wouldn't recommend that that's what that's used for.
Right.
I see the answer is no, okay.
I didn't say that.
Connecting this to the issue of the non, the people that did not receive the notice on Elverde, what, what post office are we using?
So it depends, if you're in the seven-eight-two-four-oh zip code, then it goes through the Days of Allah office. If you're in the seven-eight.
You take it to the Days of Allah office?
We don't take it to the Days of Allah office, we have a postman that comes and picks up the mail here, but then it goes to the Leon Valley office here. But if you live in the seven-eight-two-four-oh area, then from this post office here, it gets shipped to the Days of Allah office and then Days of Allah sends their mailman for the seven-eight-two-four-oh. It has been that way.
I don't know why, we have argued it, we tried to get it changed.
We have done legislation and fought to get that whole system changed for as long as I have been here.
Right.
The post office, federal government has said, we cannot redistrict, it costs thousands and thousands of dollars to be able to do that, and so we can't do it. So it seems a little inefficient that it goes through here first, then out to Days of Allah and then back out to the residents, but that's the way we've been told it's handled.
That's right.
But in the Elverde Road case specifically, they're in the seven-eight-two-three-eight area, and so we're required by law to mail it. It's not a door by door, you have to mail it, you have to mail the notification, it's very clear in the law. And so we send out the mailed notification, I don't know why they didn't get it.
So would it be possible for us to bundle up all these notifications and take them ourselves to a certain post office, like at the medical center, just to test the system and see if it's here or if it's over there or what, work.
So we did try that.
Not, everybody does not receive mail on time in the city, so there must be something going on here locally that's creating this issue.
We don't know, so we have tried, your city secretary thinks she sent our mail last week through Halotas to see if we got, if it was up.
She took it out to Halotas?
She took it out to Halotas.
Okay, okay.
And dropped it off there, so we're, we are doing exactly what you're saying, we're trying to test it out. I am, you know, we've got some other issues with other mail stuff, so we're trying to figure out what's going on.
I understand, thank you, I have more questions.
Okay, thank you very much, really appreciate it, yes, Mr. Blackmore.
I'm in complete agreement with Mr., uh, the gentleman who was just up here.
Owen.
Owen, yeah, I know, uh, Yornel. Uh, this budget thing, y'all can cut a lot more out of this budget, we don't need a swimming pool. Now, I grant you, my parents belonged to that club, I belong to that club, that swimming pool. Uh, I, my first marriage was done, uh, reception was done there, um, Bridge Club, the Garden Club used to take place there. Great place, but it's only open three months out of the year. Save the money and put it towards the city. Now, the most important thing in this city is the fire department, the police department, the staff. That includes maintenance. All the rest of it, you can cut down to bare bones. Do it, do so. Do it, do so, to bring the city back. The last three councils was the ones I blame for, for the, what's happened now. That's, that's all I got to say right now. I got a lot more.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Dr. Caldera, you have the list of, from everybody.
So, so what I'm hearing is the fire department, everybody seemed to be on board with the fire department. So them getting their, um, 30,000 back. I've got two for the park maintenance, two for the mass notification, and two for putting it in the reserve. Come on, guys.
I have to pay for the mass notification, for the park maintenance, and for the 30,000 back to the fire department, whatever's left goes in the general fund.
Reserve.
Reserve.
Okay, so I'm going to, unless, so unless, I'm going to look at all of y'all. So I'm going to add back the ma, I'm going to add the noti, mass notification, because everybody seems to be okay with that. I'm going to add the fire department, I'm going to add some to the parks and I'll put a little bit in reserve. Is everybody okay with that? And I'll add the 300, it's $389 for the, um, American Legion. You okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm seeing nods, I see a smirk. Saying, saying nothing means a yeah. I want y'all to know, when y'all stay quiet, that doesn't mean you abstain, you don't. So if you stay quiet, it's a yes to me, so.
Okay, so then there, there will, there will not be a 4th of July celebration next year?
We haven't, so that's, so.
Is that correct?
So, that's not, so I did modified fourth, my, I did propose a different alternative the last meeting, which is doing your last and final, because you can't do it outside of operating. If you want to do your full fourth one more time, you could take it out of your economic development reserve fund, but that would be your final hoopla. Like, you have to make that year, you can't continue to support that event out of your operating expenses.
Okay, that could be a discussion.
So that was, that was a conversation, but this, I was trying to look at what you're unassigned thing.
Got you, all right, that's all I wanted, yes.
So if y'all are okay with that, then.
Counselor Heil has a comment.
I just have one comment. We're still going to have people coming back and asking us for money. So I guess my thought is, the mass notification, because that's important, and that's what happened in Fredericksburg. They didn't have anything, and then.
You know, I think we're all numb because we keep getting those amber alerts, you know, and they're so, they're so, you know, bothersome, and so people just, yeah, just ignore, but if we only use it for emergencies in Leon Valley, we'll, we'll make sure we communicate that.
And I, I, you know, I agree, all these other things are needed, but I still like saving my money, so, that's where I'm at, well.
Yeah, I got, I got you, that's what we kept saying, come back to the reserve fund, so.
I do have a question on that, I'm sorry.
Oh, Counselor, Counselor Roscoe and Counselor Marsh.
I'm okay with that, it's something different. This money sort of coming down federal and state for alarm, alarm systems, just that we talked about. Are we able to get into that?
For our sirens, so we already have sirens, that's what they're geared towards, because that's what they didn't have in that particular situation. Melinda's looking at doing, um, some arms. Um, and so we'll be going out for some, some grant funds for, for some of our arms, but mass notification systems aren't on that listing. As approved, there'll be alarm systems, getting people out of the flood zone is going to be really big. Um, and drainage and flood control projects. So like your Heebner, now, we'll have, we'll bring that up at a future session, but your erosion at your Heebner Creek, actually sitting down and coming up with the direction that y'all want to go with that, because I do think that there's going to be some flood control dollars to be able to, to garner some of those funds for, so.
Well, I went to the Bear County budget hearing last week, and they have 21 million set aside for upgrades on the, uh, those, what do you call it, those arms, but then also sensors and alarms and everything, so they're, and it's going to be countywide. I don't know how it's going to impact Leon Valley, but we'll certainly find that out.
Yeah, absolutely, and if we budget for the 6,500, it doesn't mean that I can't go for a grant if a grant opportunity, all we do is go for the grant and then we just don't use those funds.
Right, okay, very good, yes, Counselor Marsh.
So I have a follow-up question. So if we allocate this $30,000 back to the fire department or to the park maintenance, and we don't need it all for those maintenance items, it will still go back to the, to the, the general fund?
Yeah.
So whether we start with it in the fund or whether we have it allocated as a line item and we don't use it all, that.
But it won't, it won't roll over until the next fiscal year, that's the thing, right?
Yes, yeah, so it doesn't roll over to the next fiscal year. I will say that, there, there's two financial philosophies. One is if you give it, we'll spend it, right? Like, if you give the money to the staff, the staff's going to spend it. Well, I've proven that's not necessarily true. We've put, uh, last year alone, we put 1.4 million back into general fund reserve, because we just, we didn't spend it. And each department did, each department, including Parks and Rec, put back a good chunk of the money. We, I make it a contest, like every year, like if we don't need it, we're not spending it. I'm not just, we're going to zero out these accounts. If we're not going to use it, then it does go back into your general fund reserve. Um, and if y'all would like a history of that, I can certainly give you, I did the last 10 years when I was giving y'all the other presentation. And so we do put money back into the general fund reserve. Um, so if we don't need it, if the park maintenance, the swings, nothing breaks, the seesaw works all year, just, you know, all of the things go right at the park, then yes, of course, Melinda's not going to just spend it to spend it, we'll put it back. It'll roll over at the end of that fiscal year, yes.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, you'd like to continue?
I'm sorry, it's very odd for me to be down here.
I know, I was, I was going to say, I'm so used to you being over there and now you're, okay. So anything else on this unassigned fund? I think you've got the consensus.
So I think we've got mass notification, fire department, park, the 389, and then if there's anything left over, to put it back in the reserve fund.
Okay, is that all right, Ms. Heil? I know you wanted more in the reserve, but that's okay.
Okay, sorry, moving on. Um, so your revenue, this is.
Yes, excuse me, Counselor Campos.
So I thought there was two parts to this question. Wasn't the second part on assigning the reserve?
Yes.
Or is that coming later?
Uh, so I'm going to, I'm going to, when I get to the end of this fund, the next three slides, so I'm going to zoom through them, so we can probably get to that question. So these are your revenue sources here for your general fund, and we've broken them down and we've gone over them. And then we're going to, we've got, you've got all of your expenditures. So you have your court expenditures, the breakdown of your court, your municipal court, your finance expenditures and the breakdown of your finance department, city manager and council expenditures, um, and the breakdown of those, your IT budget and the breakdown of that, your police expenditures, um, your police department. Okay, so now we're hitting into your police capital, which is 6,600. Then you move on to your impound law expenditures, which is still part of your general fund. Um, your breakdown, your fire department expenditures, um, your fire department breakdown. The capital in the fire department is ARPA funds, which is your ambulance. Your public works expenditures, breakdown, your capital for public works is the ATV, concrete grinder and equipment trailer. Your planning and zoning expenditures and breakdown, no capital, economic development and their breakdown. Your code enforcement expenditures and their breakdown. Uh, and then your special events, your special event breakdown, your parks and rec expenditures. Oh, wait, I passed your special events. Okay, now it's time to talk about 4th of July. Um, and so at the end of this, we can talk about your unassigned reserve fund. So your special events, all you have dedicated this year for special events is your Christmas tree lighting, Earthwise, and 10,000 for overtime in order to accomplish both of those events. And so, um, we have taken out the 4th of July. And I've heard 50/50, I've heard people say they don't need the 4th of July, we can live without it. And then I've heard few residents saying that we can't live without it. So, um, it is up to this body to tell me what you would like to do. Um, you do not have the money in operating expenditures to continue on with that event. But again, if you want to do it next year, that would be my recommendation, is you take the full amount and reduce your economic development ending fund balance from, I think it was like one, a little, close to 1 million, I think it's like 930,000 sitting over there. Um, and you take 180 from that and do the full-fledged 4th of July as the 250th celebration, if that's something y'all want to do.
Okay, uh, Ms. Bolton, how do you feel about that?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of torn. 150th year, I, I understand, but I kind of feel like maybe it needs to be modified. There's no way that we can afford it being done the way that it's being done, $100,000. We've got much bigger things to take care of.
It's actually 180,000.
I, I mean, that's a lot, just.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And Counselor Heil, where are you?
You know, I'm in the same thing. There are people that really want it and people who say it's a waste of money. So it's really difficult to know what, what people want, because it is divided. But, you know, I'm surprised that we can't get, we have a lot of companies in the city and around, that we can't get donations that could really help with this. They don't give money, Dr. Caldera?
So we used to be able to get a lot of donations. What people have come to determine is they're giving us money to throw a party. It's not for a cause, like if you, I hate to give a cause, but if you were going to do like autism parade or something, people are more willing to give money towards a cause that they support. 4th of July, yes, is, is a, is a great event, it's Independence Day that people want to celebrate. And we do have some really large donors. You have Leon Valley Storage and some other donors that give 10,000 plus dollars to this event. They can't write it off, you're not a 501(c)(3). And so I know it's come up to go out for an event, we can make this a money-making event. There's so many regulations that go along with that, that it make it, it makes it virtually impossible. And so you, if you want to do the event, you need to budget the 183,000. We go out for donations. You'll see the after-action Miranda's going to give you at your next council meeting, and she got a lot of donations. The fireworks this year, we spent 20, almost $20,000 on, they're going to go up. It's not going to be 20,000, the tariff fees are going to impact the fireworks for next year. And so I don't know how much it's going to cost. How long do you want it? Um, and so a lot of things are going to impact that dollar amount. We've estimated 180,000, but that's 180,000 from the city's budget, that's not including the donations we already get.
Okay, so, Counselor Campos.
So, there's no, in my opinion, there's no way that we can afford this out of the operating budget, even in the modified way. In the modified way, can you remind me what it would be?
So you would, so we would, uh, you would need the full amount, you would need about 63,000.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
You would need the full amount that's sitting there, the 63,000 in surplus, sitting there.
Oh, 63.
I would need it, I would need it all, and even then be cutting it close. So the thing about the modified event is if you do the fireworks, I still need the fencing to fence off the fireworks. I still need six firefighters to sit there and watch the fireworks. I still need police over there, um, and traffic control. Um, because we still have people that are going to bring in alcohol and drink, you know, and there's, we're not serving. Um, and so I still need lights, because people need to be able to exit and not fall down the creek. I still need porta-potties, because we don't want people, you know, going to the natural area. Um, and so, so there's certain things, even with just saying, we're not going to do the vendors or the DJ or the, the, and then people start saying, well, it's just the fireworks and just the open park, but we need music. So then I'm like, okay, well, let's get a DJ and no bands, but then I still need a stage with speakers and, and then lights for the DJ. And so it starts continuously adding up. I can, we could maybe, we did the Jazz Festival, I think it was close to 60,000 with everything. So it'd be pretty close to that, so I think you'd probably be expending close to $60,000.
But on the, the Jazz Festival?
She's saying 75. So we've tried to run some, but it's hard, because we don't really know what the fireworks are going to cost. And actually, what they're doing is giving us an estimate and putting a clause in there saying this doesn't include tariff fees.
And if we do a modified version of this, can that be taken out as a one-time expenditure out of the, the economic development?
Yeah, you, you.
There's just no way that we can get it out of the general fund. And so that's what I'm trying to balance, but should get an understanding.
So if you do the, if you do, you could do a modified version, 200, my thing is, is if you're really going for the 250th, I'd hate for this event, I'm sorry, I mean, and I'm the one that's been saying it, you need to stop doing the fourth. Um, but if you're going to do it for the 250th, I hate for it to be a downgrade from the year before. Um, because, and then you're going to have people with some high expectations on what this event is going to be. Um, and then you'll have a lot of disappointment, and the last time we tried to do a modified event, we didn't come out.
That was when Gilbert was here.
Yeah, and we didn't, we didn't.
From COVID.
We didn't come, we didn't look, it looked like we didn't know what we were doing, it looked like it was just a mess. So I think the residents and the individuals that come to our 4th of July have a certain level of expectation of what that will be. And so when I provide a modified event, it looks like we didn't, we didn't do what we've been doing.
Okay, Mr. Standard wanted to say something on this.
I raised six kids, and my kids said, Dad, you're the biggest poop when it comes to the fireworks. And we often got a much better fireworks show behind my backyard than what the city put up. So why don't we just take a rest for a while? Because, um, the city puts up a pretty good one, the county puts up a pretty good one.
Six Flags.
And Six Flags puts up a pretty good one, and, and SeaWorld, so they're all over the place. Why don't we just rest and, and, um, not worry about it and see how it goes?
Okay, thank you, that's very good, good words. Well, blame it on you, Bill.
Blame it on me.
Okay, sounds good.
Y'all do a good job, believe me.
Okay, thank you. No, I, you know, it, it, those are really good words of wisdom. Yes, Mr. Yornell, do you agree?
Well, I'm going to make this 50/50.
Okay.
She's given you a solution to have it next year, it's an important year in the history of our country. I think if you look at yourselves in the mirror in the future and you say, my God, why didn't we do this? This was an important event for this history of our country. She's got a solution, Dr. Caldera. So I would say go for it, and talk about doing something to raise the money for next year. I mean, not having this thing work is a real negative. Y'all are up there watching everything on your little screens and we don't see a thing.
I know, I know, I'm sorry about that.
We don't have any idea what you're, what you, what's coming up next.
I know.
I can't help it, there's no electricity.
Huh?
There's no electricity to the projector. We're in blackout. The city, that's why there's no lights in the hallway.
We're on a generator, we're on a generator because of the electricity.
Electricity went out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we had announced that at the beginning.
Lucky to even have this. Okay, well, that's a, that's an explanation, but we just, it doesn't work, doesn't, doesn't tell us anything, okay.
I know.
You get on your phone and you hit watch, you can see the PowerPoint.
So why can't we just have a TV in here?
I, I'd have to go find a TV.
No, in the future, I mean, we, if we can watch it on TV, why can't we watch it on TV here?
Because the TV plug isn't hooked, those plugs don't work.
In the future, let's, let's simplify this, okay?
Yeah, it's right, we've got a note that we're.
Thank you.
I have several questions, and I don't know whether to stand here and ask them now, or, or she's going, Dr. Caldera is going to go through the process and I wait till y'all have answered everything, and so I, I need some help here.
Okay, Dr. Caldera, you want him to go ahead and ask all of his questions now, or?
You can wait till we get to those, like, so we're talking about the fourth, so.
Okay, so.
Okay, so come back up whenever you, when it.
Yes, and if at the, and if at the end, there's extra questions that you haven't addressed, then we'll hear from you, how's that?
Okay, one question, you've already talked about the reserve fund. Okay, you talk about allocating funds to the reserve fund, okay? And then you talk about you making a budget adjustment. Where does that come from?
Okay, uh, well, like a budget adjustment would be, like, a good example would be the, um, fire maintenance, okay?
You, you've got a reserve fund, it's a pot of money sitting here.
Okay, but we budgeted, in the budget today, we have $70,000 for fire maintenance, okay?
I'm talking about the reserve.
Well, I know, but the reserve is when you finish, uh, fund, or, um, you use that up, you have to go to the reserve. So you come to the council and you ask for a budget adjustment for X number of dollars to cover additional repairs. That's how the reserve fund works.
I'm not asking my question.
Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I'm.
According, I, I watched their meeting, the last meeting, twice, trying to get, and I have, that's how I got my question.
Okay.
The general reserve fund is a million two emergency fund, is what does I have down, right?
That's an emergency, we only use it in time event emergencies.
And then there's, uh, 5 million, 5.6?
Right.
In, in the regular, okay?
Reserve fund.
Is that, is that money going to be allocated down the line to buy this and this and this?
That's what the manager would like for us to discuss tonight.
Okay.
So in other words, we set aside, uh, 300,000 for a future ambulance, that kind of thing.
So we come to a meeting and we need to make a budget adjustment. Where does that money come from?
The 5 million dollars.
Okay, so you've already allocated, it's off the table, you've allocated for this down the future. So really, you don't have 5 million dollars in the budget for these budget adjustments?
Well, we won't use it all. We'll keep, we'll keep some money in there so that.
But then you don't have a, you don't have a reserve, you've used your reserve.
I don't think we'll use it all, no.
So you have 5.7 million dollars. Um, in the original capital discussion, it would have dropped it to like 3 million if we bought everything that the staff.
Okay, what I'm concerned about is, we're trying to get all these items out of this same pot of money. When I was on the city council, we had a city manager, no matter what you ask him, can we do this, can we do this, can we do this? The list got quite lengthy, and he was using the same pot of money. The list got quite lengthy, and he was using the same pot of money for everybody. There wasn't enough money to go around. But he just said yes to everything. So...
Well, I don't tell this council yes.
Yes, you don't do that.
Obviously says no to us.
But what I'm asking you, this reserve fund is put down for, and you're gonna now allocate it?
And I would think that there's gonna be some flexibility in that, too, you know? If something comes up and we absolutely, you know, need money for something, we, you know...
So, right, so, we, I only bring to council budget adjustments that cannot wait. So, for instance, we had a light go out. We were able to incur it. We didn't need to hit the general fund reserve. But let's say I had a traffic light go out. It needs to be replaced, and I need 50,000 to do that. We've had Pos Road crumble, and we had to come to council, and we had to do a budget adjustment for that. So, I'm very big on keeping a healthy reserve fund, because we have unexpected costs. That's why you're sitting at 6 million. The previous city manager had y'all sitting like at 3 or something.
So, it's been doubled, so to speak.
Since I've been your city manager, I've almost doubled your general fund reserve. Now, there's different philosophies in financial management, and people believe that 6 million dollars sitting in the reserve is too much money. I have been told that by residents of Leon Valley, that we need to spend it. And so, we are, I've provided the council over the next 10 years, a capital plan for the next 10 years. And if we spent, if we took that 5 million dollars, we would actually zero out by FY '35. You would run out of money. And so, my exercise with the council with that was to show them that 6 million dollars really isn't necessarily a lot of money. It goes very quickly.
Oh, yes.
And so, that way, we have to be ultra-conservative in our spending when it comes to the reserve fund. But it's not to say that we don't have future needs. An ambulance, a backhoe.
The radios.
The radios. And so, my question to them is, instead of getting hit with one big hit in one fiscal year, if they would like to assign funds. So, I would like for them to assign 200,000 in this year's budget to go towards an ambulance and another 200,000 next year, so we can order the ambulance, because the ambulance takes about 563 days to get here.
Yeah.
And the other is, they went ahead and they asked for, Melinda came in and asked for 50% to apply to a pool grant. And so, the council's gonna have to come up with 800,000 dollars in the next three years. So, I would like them to allocate 200,000 a year.
That's smart.
And so, I'm asking them to allocate those assigned funds.
Previous councils have been a failure with our budget situation, because this is where you are now. We're pinching pennies, and we're talking about, we can't even give our employees an award for service. My gosh. It's awful. It's awful. We're pinching pennies here, and please look in the mirror, look and say, you know, "I did what I needed to do to get the city back on level ground." We're not even on level ground.
Okay. Mr. Campos wants to say something, and so does Mr. Orozco. Go ahead.
If I could clarify, so the reason, in my mind, why we would want to allocate our reserve fund is that we don't start thinking, "Oh, we have so much money to spend. Let's go ahead and lower the tax rate, because we're just gonna hit our savings account." But that savings, this reserve fund, is to use for future, for future capital items that are coming up. In my list, I've got six items that I want to put...
Totally, how much, sir?
I don't have a dollar amount yet, but it's like, okay, we talked about the...
But it's not, it's not paper products that are...
No, 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 no. It's capital needs.
For example, we're gonna have a change in the radio system here within the few years.
Million dollars?
Now, the police is gonna get some help possibly from the county, or we have police forfeiture money and...
Crime control. We've got crime control money.
But the fire department needs those same radios, and they don't have the funds. And so, can we allocate that?
Well, I'm for you allocating it.
Right, but it's, but it's to kind of identify, hey, this is really what we have left. And we need to preserve and take care of this, rather than saying, "Hey, let's spend it all. We have 6 million dollars. Let's spend it." That's the wrong idea.
You've got it, you got it already allocated for this and this and this, and the figure down below is not the six. It's something...
Exactly. And that's, to me, that's the exercise that I see that we're doing.
Councillor Orozco.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Calderon, just out of curiosity, when I came on council about five years ago, do you remember what the general fund was or the reserve at the time?
I was...
Then we depleted it to 1 million or 2 million.
Do you have your audit book?
I was looking at it.
I love the audit book, because when you look at the audit book, it has 10 years of history, and it has the general fund reserve for the last 10 years. And I'll bring it next time, but it's great.
Before I'm going with this is that...
It tells you everything.
One of the objectives that I had when coming to council, I wanted to leave it a better place than what I found it. And one of them include our financial status. And I think at the time, if I can remember, we had depleted, the previous administration had depleted it to maybe 1 or 2 million dollars for general fund, and now we got 5 million, too. And I think that, as the gentleman had indicated earlier, I think we need to take a break. Of all the people that have approached me on the Fourth of July, I've had it almost even to the point where the majority said, "You know what? We can do without it." And I think that we should take a breath, let it go for a little. Pay for what we have to pay as far as the fire department and the police. And as mentioned also, their celebrations are low in San Antonio that we can attend. And if we do okay with this budget, this is the most intense budget that I've seen in the five years that I've been here.
Yes.
And, I mean, I have never seen it like that, and it kind of worries me, because I want to continue to leave it a better place than what I found it, including the money for our future counselors. They're gonna take my place and be able to take care of our city with the money. I know that 180,000 may not seem like a lot to you guys, because we got 5 million, but it is. We need it for the fire department, we need it for the police, we need it for traffic lights and stuff like that that go out. And I'm okay with letting it go for this year. And if God willing, if I decide to run again, I'll go ahead and approach this next time. But mine is to let it go this year.
Okay, thank you. And Councillor Marsh.
I have difficulty spending that much money out of our fund for a big party. And I know it's a good reason to have a big party, and I know there are a lot of citizens that want to have something, but I think we can celebrate the Fourth of July in other ways, whether it's doing some decorations on the city buildings or whatever to commemorate the 250th. But I'm not in favor of spending that reserve fund money for the celebration for next year.
That would be the Economic Development Fund Reserve. That's where that would come from, not the, not the, not the general fund. There's two different funds here, so just so y'all know.
So, addition to economic fund, are we able to bring it up again?
Yeah, sure. We have nine, over 900,000 in the reserve fund in that one, one fund. That's what Dr. Calderon was saying.
Businesses, but if, some of the programs, we have eliminated that we're not using 100,000, 100,000 here. We can always bring it up if, you know, if the budget comes okay and we're doing all right, you know, let's cross that bridge, you know, when we... I know that Crystal needs a certain time to do it, but let's cross this bridge. We'll get another time. But right now, I don't want it.
Okay, all right. And you don't want it either. Yes, Councillor Bolton.
I think something else we need to remember is that the red light cameras are gonna be bringing in less funds every single year. We cannot depend on having this money coming in. It's gonna get lower every single year. So, we need to think smart before we spend anything, especially that, on that much for a party.
So, to answer Mr. Orozco's question, in 2020, it was 3.7. In 2021, when I took over, it went to 3.3. Then in 2022, it went to 4.5. In 2023, it went to 5.9. And in 2024, 6.8. And so, my job was to raise it up from the 3 million dollars that y'all were sitting there in order for y'all to do it. And if you're on your CAFER, you can take a look. It's on page 92 of your CAFER.
Thank you.
And so, that was my goal for the city, is to make sure y'all become financially stable.
Good job.
Some people think so. Some people would like me to spend that money. So, again, it's a, it's a financial philosophy, and the council directs the spending of those funds. You, you know, if you, you may think certain items are more important, and so...
Well, let me ask you this. If we spend all that money like some people are advocating, and we have an issue, whose pocket do we go to to get the money to cover whatever it is that needs to be covered?
I don't know. Taxp... You, you...
There is no pocket.
Well, what ends up happening is, is you deplete your fund. Windcrest is a good example.
Yeah, I've got their, I've got their things tonight, yeah.
They have to go all the way up to their de minimis rate.
Yeah.
And so, that's what ends up happening.
Went to what?
The de minimis rate, yeah.
Or it's closer to your vote, it's right below your voter approval rate.
Oh, okay.
But you just, you go up, you go up on your tax rate in order to cover the cost, in order to rebuild your fund, your reserve fund. I'm trying to do it within the parameters of what y'all give me.
I want to tell y'all, I appreciate, this is an open and valid conversation. We're having issues. People are on both sides of the issue, and you're working it out. This is the way the system's supposed to work.
That's right.
And I appreciate you doing it, even though we don't all agree.
No, that's right. Yeah. Okay, so what I just passed out, and I'd already shared this with the city manager, each city has to post their notice of increase in their budget.
Right.
And this just shocked me. This was Windcrest, a neighbor of ours on the north, other northeast side of town. But what shocked me is that they, we went, we went to the no new revenue tax rate plus one penny. Oh, we went up one penny. But Windcrest went all the way past the voter approval rate, because you can include the de minimis rate, and I'll let you explain that, Crystal. So, they went, they went from, they increased five cents. They're raising 500,000 dollars in their budget this year. They're going all the way to the max. I talked to the mayor on Friday. We had a mayor's meeting on Friday, and he just said, "We have the need. We need the money." And then he also said, "When you look at the amount that's being raised and you divide it among the population per month, it's like less than about $100 a month or something." But, I mean, it's for police, fire, you know, whatever else they had. So, he said, "I'll know next May if they throw me out," and I'm like, "Oh, okay." But anyway, I just wanted to share that with the council, because I was like, "Wow, I've never seen a city go all the way up to the very, very, to the edge, not having a vote of the council, of the people." Usually, you have to have a vote of the people to raise it. So, would you explain that de minimis rate? It's extra pennies or something, right?
Do they take your unused, I'm gonna say it wrong, but...
Yeah, it's complicated.
Yeah, from your years prior, and they add them up. It's not all the way to the voter approval rate, but it's about a cent less than your voter approval rate. It normally, it used to be called the fire truck law, because that's how much it used to be cost to buy. Now, it doesn't cost 500,000, but that's what they used to call it, in order to raise about a half a million dollars.
Another device, another tool you use to get above a certain level up to this other level.
But, yeah, it was still under the voter approval rate, so they don't have to put it to the vote of the council.
That represents with Windcrest, a real failure. I mean, over, how long did it take them getting in this situation? And what did they have to do to solve it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We don't want to go that route.
We're not gonna respond, but I mean, I just, like I said, I just was real curious and talked to them.
It didn't happen in one year.
No, so, anyway.
So, anyway, so my goal is, is to make sure that you have enough money sitting in your general fund reserve. Your economic development, I'm sorry, your economic development ending fund balance, there is some money sitting there. I, you know, again, it's one of those things, if you want to do it. I'm hearing no, so I, I mean, I've heard three no's.
Well, I think that what I'm hearing is no, but we can always come back if we need to, right?
What's our timing before Crystal?
Now, now, I'm sorry. We start planning, as soon as we end the last fourth, we start planning. I have to give deposits down for the fireworks. I have to give deposits down for the band, the stage, the porta potties. Fourth of July, there are events everywhere, so we have to secure those items now.
It's still an oh for me.
Yes, I'm, hey, this is important. We need, if you spent your time to come tonight, we need to hear from you. Go ahead.
Again, Drew Power from Hanover Field, Forest Oaks. You brought up an excellent point, needs versus wants. I am all for celebrating the 250th anniversary of this God-given country. But the competition that we're gonna be up against, SeaWorld, Six Flags, Bear County, San Antonio, is if we can't do it huge, don't do it. Go big or go home. And I think there are so many more important needs in this city than throwing a party on the Fourth of July. I'd hate to see it go away, don't get me wrong. But we are in a, in a position, and thank you, Dr. Calderon, for the amazing work you have done the past couple of years, getting us that cushion that we need. And this council, I've never seen cooperation and uniformity since I have lived in this city, and it's just heartwarming.
Thank you.
But our wants seem to be, or our needs seem to be outweighing the wants, and we need to concentrate on our needs. I can't leave my neighborhood for a solid month without seeing a water main break or a cracked sidewalk, and Public Works is amazing on getting on top of the sidewalks. But our infrastructure is just crumbling out from under us, and I think that's a lot more important than the Fourth of July.
Okay, thank you so much for those comments. Okay, so, yeah, we want to go around on the, we need a decision on the Fourth of July, yes or no?
No.
Ms. Heil?
No.
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 Okay. And I'll say no as well. I think we, we've heard from, you know, we can always do it in the future, but thank you. So now, Crystal, one more thing off your plate, Crystal, Miranda, one more thing off your plate. You'll give her more stuff, right?
This morning, we went through our contracting list. She took half the IT contract, so.
Oh, okay. There you go. Okay, what else do we have?
Parks and Rec, that's your expenditures. That your capital is going to be the segment two, the lawnmower, Amerigo round, the Veterans Park Monument, and the pool repair reupsturing.
Oh, can I just make a comment? That's 2.3, so that's already taken out of the...
Correct, of the 5.7.
Of the 5.7.
Or it's not, yes, it's already, it's already taken out. 5.7 is left after the purchase of all.
Is 5.7, is left after the 2.3? Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make that point.
I would give myself a pat on the back, but I won't. Library expenditures and library department. Now, since we've concluded the general fund, I'm gonna go back to that summary slide. And so, I had emailed this council some projected capital in the future. And so, my question to you, because we originally discussed it at the beginning of these budget conversations, oops, was whether or not you wanted to assign some of that 5.7 million dollars to future needs. And so, the two future needs I proposed to y'all was 200,000 for the Forest Oaks pool grant application that you gave permission for Public Works to do, and another 200,000 towards the ambulance for the fire department. So, that would take your 5.7 million down by 400,000 dollars.
Any disagreement on that? Everybody agree with that? Okay, all right. Councillor Campos. Did you have something else you wanted to add to that?
You know, I certainly would like to start allocating some money, and I don't know what, I don't think any of us know what the final cost would be for the fire radios. Because we can't get that out of any other fund, other than this particular fund.
No, crime control, crime control.
So, that's one of the reasons I've been building your crime control. Not that I recommend that you suck all your crime control money, but a good portion of it would come from your crime control. You have one point...
We have 800,000.
No, not for fire.
And so, my comment was fire.
Yes, fire, I'm sorry, police.
Not police. Fire, so the radios...
Well, I thought they used the same radios.
Yeah, but you can't buy it out of crime control dollars.
Oh, for the fire?
Correct.
So, we have to only do the police and then the fire? But we're still, it's gonna be more for the police, because we have more police than fires, so. Okay. And we also, last time we bought the radios, we got the Bear County to help us.
Right.
So, we're certainly gonna nurture that.
When they decide what they're gonna do, we're not gonna be the only city. So, everybody's gonna say, "Hey, we need money, too." Last time, I think we had to come up with about a half a million dollars for the radios, or close to it. And so, I anticipate probably a little bit more than that. I'm anticipating probably maybe 800,000 or so if the county decides. But the county also has a lot of needs. I've been kind of following their budget, too, so I don't know, I don't know what's going to be available, and I don't want to assume that either. But yes, you're going to have to budget for 28 radios for the fire department, I think.
28 radios for the fire?
Four.
Four.
Forty-five?
Forty-five.
Oh, wow.
Okay. And so, that's one need. Okay, and, and so that's one need.
And what about the police, how many for the police?
Probably double that.
Ninety.
Ninety? I'm sorry, 100 and one? What, what was that? He. Sixty, okay, sixty for the, for the police, okay.
And there's a lot that's going along with the radios. Depending on which they select, we also need to install infrastructure. So it's not just radios, it's, it's towers and stuff that go along with the radios, and infrastructure that goes along with that. And so it's, so when we say radios, I know people at home are Googling these radios, and they're like, "How are they coming up with this dollar amount?" It's infrastructure as well that go along with that. And so we go off of whatever the, we try to also loop in with the San Antonio bid. Like, we try to, we try to do it as one, so that we get the lower cost. And that's kind of how we did it the last time.
Does that include airtime too?
No, airtime's separate, and that's, and you pay for that completely separate, and that's part of your operating expenses.
So the other thing, we, you talked about an ambulance. But what about when are we gonna have a new fire truck need?
So I put that in y'all's budget, and I think it's about five years out. I have to look at my spreadsheet. I think it's about five years out, but yes. It's going to be, it's probably gonna be close to a million dollars, five years out. I think it was five, five or six years out.
We start putting money aside for it now?
So I'd like to see about that. Then I, I'm confused, I did look at your capital projection that you sent in the budget, but I was unclear about the fire air apparatus for our firefighters.
Yeah, it's in there.
I saw it later in the, in the budget, but I think the need is, is prior to what, what I saw in the budget. So Chief, can you tell us more or less when you're thinking you're gonna need those fire?
First of all, what is it?
It's the air packs the firefighters wear.
The what?
Their air packs.
Air packs that they wear.
Oh, okay, the air packs, okay.
I think I have it in FY '27.
Fire, air apparatus is what it's called. So when you go into a burning building, you have, you have oxygen, right?
So they were purchased in 2018. They're only, they have an expiration date, and it's 10 years. That's it. Can't be used any longer than that. It has to be replaced. That's state law.
Okay. And how much are those?
I have in here 45,000. I think that's what that is.
No, they're. Five or six thousand apiece. I think they're, depending on what the Fire Commission changes in standards, the last ones we bought were $6,000 around about each.
Each, okay. And how many do you need?
Forty-five. No.
No.
Twenty?
No, we, you have to have one for each seated position on every vehicle, and we carry them on the ambulance because we don't have enough firemen, so the ambulance has to have air packs. And then two spare. We always have one broken, so.
Just around about.
Five, four, fifteen, twenty-one, probably 25.
Okay.
And like I say, and, and the only caveat to it, just like everything else we're saying, there's a two-year build time on them.
Build time? So you have to order them like now, or next?
Would need to order them ahead of time. You don't have to pay for them ahead of time.
Okay.
But you would have to submit an order for them. Fire trucks are four years, ambulance is two.
So that, that's why I put those.
It's, it's on there, but it's on there for less, so you're looking at like 150,000.
And then I, I know there, we've talked about this, about the police property room, that we're eventually gonna need a structure modification, something.
So you're looking, you're, you're looking at an overhaul. So that I'll probably bring up probably sometime in the mid-year to talk about bond initiatives. We need to talk about the Public Works building and what y'all are looking at doing with that. I'm gonna loop that in, as well as some ADA stuff. But I also am hyper-aware of the increased rate, right? Like, we're going up in property tax, your rate will also go up when you issue debt service. We're going up in the water rates. I'm trying to be a little bit strategic before I start presenting debt to y'all, and trying to kind of pay attention to the interest rate. And as, if we start seeing the interest rate go down, then I will definitely put together some stuff for you to be able to do that. The property room is a need, but it's not a right now need. But it is something that I want y'all to keep in the back of your mind. But yes, you're going to have to take a look at that, you're gonna have to take a look at Public Works. And then at some point, the federal government's gonna say, "Hey, city, you've had this plan for your ADA compliance that you've promised that you were gonna start working towards, and we really haven't, and so we're going to have to, to do that." And so, but I, those initiatives, I think, can be done under one bond package. I just want to, oh, we got it.
Towers on.
Yeah.
Yay. Um, so, but I want to be a little bit more strategic before I start, because you're gonna, your, your, your property tax rate will go up with debt service.
And, and then the last thing that I have, and, and we have other needs in the next three years from Public Works that are over a million dollars, that I saw in capital. But one thing that I don't think we've talked about lately is the, the last segment of the hike and bike trail.
It's on your, that sheet that I gave y'all, y'all's capital.
Right, but I'm talking about us as colleagues here at the DIAs, that there's one more, so there's the second segment, is that correct?
Go ahead, we've already funded it, it's right here.
Already gotten, committed, okay.
1.26.
But there's one other section that we have submitted a grant. Is that, is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
It's a hundred thousand dollars.
And so we're.
For the plan.
And we're gonna need to fund a portion of that last segment.
Right, so it's 420, I put it in y'all's capital. Melinda gave y'all a presentation on that. So you have 100,000, that's for the plan, but then y'all have already okayed the 400 and, I don't know, 59,000 for her, for that segment three, is what we're anticipating, for that, for that cost. Sorry, I was trying to get this prepared.
And so my, my point is, those are the things that I can think of off the top of my head, because I wasn't prepared for that question, I started jotting down some stuff.
Yeah, I wasn't either, yeah.
I said, "Okay, I know there, these are some of the future needs."
So I, I want to be, so right now, as far as assigning the funds, I have the 200,000 for the ambulance, and 200,000 for the pool, the Forest Oaks pool grant. I can do an additional 153,000, but after, for the air packs for the fire department.
153?
Or, or like a quarter of the 150,000. You can do half now and half next year to, so we can start ordering those.
The 75,000?
The 75,000.
Okay.
And then after that, I'd caution you, I, I would leave your general fund reserve alone.
Yeah, right.
And then go from there.
Counselor Bolton?
On one of the last slides, it had the $20,000 for the Amerigo Round, 24,000 for the Veterans Memorial. I'm having a hard time with that, because if, if we're taking police officers off the streets and, and not having enough money to run the city, I'm having a hard time spending that on Amerigo Round.
So that's coming from your capital fund reserve, that's not coming from your operating expenses. So that, so you, you're taking that, that's already taken off. So the 5.7 exists with those already being purchased.
Right.
But I mean, that y'all can still, if you want to take them off, you would increase your capital fund reserve by whatever you take off.
And we can use that for?
Just capital.
Just capital.
Just capital, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so everybody good off what we have? So we don't have anything for the radios or fire truck or the hike and bike, but that's for future?
I, I think next year we'll take.
Okay, but we just got these three, 200, 275, so. All right, yes, go ahead, Mr. Campos.
I just want to, you know, the citizens to understand that there are some future needs. You know, whether we allocate it this year, that's not the important issue, but I'm trying to communicate.
Do you want to post the, what you gave us, the, the 10-year plan, or, I mean, just?
I can't, so those are my, so I run all kinds of scenarios, man. I mean, so you could, I did.
You just don't know.
So I run 300,000 adding into your reserve. What if you add no money into your reserve fund? You'll zero out five years from now. Um, you know, if you add 500,000, you may not go broke. And so I run different scenario, that's kind of my cheat sheet, but I wanted to show you I'm not crazy.
Yeah, I understand, and then, but some of these, some of these capital needs, like it's, okay, let's say it's a dump truck. Well, we get one more year, and, you know, and we've done that a lot. We, we move it out, so we don't spend it the year that we say we're gonna spend it. So, you know, there's a lot of flexibility.
Which adjustment, and some of that stuff, you could take a look at it, and you could maybe use stormwater money for some of that. I mean, we play around with that, ever, I say play around with that.
But it's a start, we've never done this before, so this is a start. So thank you, Dr. Caldera, do appreciate us looking at the. Now, Mr. Yornell, do we have any questions that you, that, that have not been answered for you? Because I believe we're at the end of the presentation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I think we're almost at the end, I should say. Yes, come, come, come.
Our chief just mentioned that it takes, you gotta, we gotta replace these radios by 18?
No, 2028.
2018, excuse me, yeah.
2028.
Okay.
That's 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you have to order them how much in advance?
Two years.
Okay, and you don't have to pay for them when you order them?
No.
Why don't we order them this, next, you know, now?
Because I have to make sure, I can't agree to purchasing those radios without council allocating funds or agreeing to purchase them, if that makes sense. I can't place the order and just be like, "Go ahead and place the order." And then the council says, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, we, we just."
And, and the council may not be the same council in two years. So that's the other thing. Counselor Campos, go ahead.
So if I could, if I'm understanding the question, the 2018 issue was the air apparatuses, not the radios.
Not radio, I got the wrong guess.
I just want to make sure.
Exactly, okay, okay.
Yeah, but still, you don't have to, you can just still order them, was what Chief said.
Correct, and now that I have that, you're dedicating funds.
75,000, then that gives you permission, yeah.
That gives me permission to put that, place that order.
Okay.
That's correct. Okay, so do you have any other questions? I'm gonna move on to the enterprise fund. So if not, if you general fund, I'll answer your questions.
Okay, what's the difference in the capital reserve and the general fund reserve? Is that two different?
They're the same thing, nope.
They're the same thing, okay.
Right.
I'm a little behind on all this, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
Come and sit with me in my office.
Come sit with you?
We will go over all your questions.
Are you serious?
He's serious, she's serious.
Okay, that's all right.
Okay, and we have a gentleman who's been so patient, and I don't know your name.
Well, let me ask one more question.
Oh, okay, okay, never mind.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna cut an IT position, and we're gonna go with info technology, something?
Contractual, it's a contractual relationship.
Commentant made by this dear lady was, "We're going to try to muddle through on the IT situation."
What I mean is, is that I'm gonna have to do it, which I'm currently doing. And I've warned the council, they will see the position return probably next year, because, you know, I used to do it, and so I'm just gonna do it for the next year.
For the next year or next half year?
The next, the rest of this year and.
And the whole next year, okay.
Okay.
Well, it was some staff's help, I mean, Roke and Crystal.
So why do we need the position at all, if you're gonna have to?
Oh, I, do you know how many computers they have here?
I understand, I understand it, but we're doing without, and she's gonna make up the difference.
I'm gonna ask for more.
It seems to me it can't be done, because her bucket's already full. There's stuff falling off on the floor.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna, the reason that I'm gonna say we're, because I wanted to try it. It's been a while since we've tried a contractual. I really want to see if we can take it on internally, so it's something we can continue a little bit. We've come across some larger projects. Once those projects are done, I'm hoping it'll settle down, and it won't require so much of my time.
And, and Mr. Yornell, you have somebody here five days a week, half-time. So it's not like Crystal's doing it 100%. She's got a contractual person here, yeah.
Yeah, he's here four hours out of the day, every day, Monday, Friday.
Okay, I, I was told that there are so many issues that the individual that was here, he's now longer here, right?
Correct.
He couldn't get something accomplished here, because there's three more things people are calling him on, but for the computer problems. So my question was, my goodness, we're gonna expect this technology firm to be able to handle all that when we, at a full-time employee can't handle it?
They've been here for a long, long time. They have a long-term relationship with our city.
They've been here a long time.
Tech lead, they, yeah, they know our city, yeah. So they're, they're.
So we're gonna try, this is, this is my.
You and I are gonna get together.
We're, we're gonna get together, but we're gonna try it.
Okay.
Okay, now, we have a, a new face in the audience, hello, hello, and what is your name?
Yes, ma'am, my name is Pastor Pablo Gonzalez. I live right here down the street on 3009 El Verde.
Okay.
And the reason I'm here, because one of my neighbors gave me a letter. And he said, you know, they're gonna be doing some work in the backyards. And, and, and I wasn't too sure what it was about, so that's why I'm here, because I didn't.
Yeah, you've been sitting here. So I'll tell you what, would you give your name and phone number to Dr. Caldera and let her call you? This agenda item, you're, you're concerned about the tower, right? On El Verde, the big tower?
He said that they were gonna take some, some of our property. I don't know how true that is.
I think it must be related to that, but that won't be heard by this council till September 16th.
One or two things, it could be the water line situation.
Ah, it could be the water line.
And so we will be disrupting El Verde for a little while, but you'll have a better water line when it's all said and done, so it could be that notice.
But that's gonna be in the front yard, right?
That's gonna be in the front.
Yeah, he was saying that.
Yeah, it's in the back.
In the back, it's the tower situation.
It's probably its tower. But I think, just because we're still on the budget, that if, would that be okay, Dr. Caldera? Yeah, so she'll call you if you'll give her, if you'll give Crystal or, or somebody, your name and number. And thank you for, for sitting and waiting, do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, you bet.
All right, so I'm gonna go to the enterprise, enterprise. I appreciate these conversations.
Yeah, I do too, yeah.
So enterprise fund, you're sitting fairly well. Your operating revenues are at 5, 5.3, your operating expenses are at 3.3. Your transfers out are 106, for Personnel Services is 1.3. Dang it.
Uh-oh.
Oh, my gosh.
Doggone it, and I thought we were gonna get the, the PowerPoint back up.
You're gonna have to give me a second.
Okay.
I would love to do this off the top of my head, but.
You leaving?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right, you bet. All righty. Oh, good, I'm so glad, thank you. All right, take care.
I don't like delays, because then y'all start changing hell's mind on stuff. Uh, it's rebooting, just give me a quick second. Are you back up? No.
I hope you're not driving home tonight. Good, I'm glad, makes me feel good that you're. All right, while we're, yeah, you might as well, go ahead, yes, sir.
Where do we stand on the city picking up the rest over trash?
That, that is gonna be on the next agenda, yeah.
Next week?
Uh, no, September second, yeah. Mr. Orozco had, had requested that specifically to be put on that, um, that agenda, so I just remembered reading it, so it'll be on the September second.
At some point tonight, you're gonna get to the point where you talk about the actual setting the tax rate, are we gonna get there tonight?
Yeah, that's the next agenda item.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Guess I oughta look at my mail. Have you signed all this? Yes. Oh, well, we haven't had any, we haven't had any very much action. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that's me, hold on. Could be good.
There you go.
All right, um. Man, I'm gonna be, well, we went through all the generals.
I thought we had our electricity back on, no?
It is, but it's, it shot down some of our stuff, and so they're complete reboots, and so I would have to take. Well, I would have to take us completely down one more time and reboot us all up. And so we're probably gonna continue to do this. I'm gonna continue to move forward and just hope that the residents at home don't think I'm doing something non-transparent. And try to record this portion of the meeting. Drop back into the meeting. We can take this footage off of it, and we'll maybe have to load it into parts or something, yeah. Okay. Okay, um, so we're gonna move forward with the enterprise fund. Okay.
With the camera, with the projector, with?
No.
No, I, I would have to reboot us to get everything to resync, and so I think it'll just take longer. Um, so your water cells are sitting at two million, your sewer cells are sitting at two point six. Um, your contractual is your highest expenditure. Um, your sewer is, um, your highest expense. Um, we group them all together, water, sewer, and stormwater with an ending fund balance of three point one. Then we break it out, and your water expense, um, with one point eight. Uh, your water capital is water mains and water rights. Your sewer expense is two point three. Your sewer capital is sewer main replacement. Stormwater, stormwater, we're looking at a wood chipper, one backhoe, and one brush, uh, truck, one brush truck. Your red light cameras, um, this is the one that I'm just bringing to your attention, your ending fund balance will be a hundred and twenty-one thousand. Your red light camera expenditures are sitting at one point six. Your traffic safety, your expenditures are four fifteen. Your American Rescue Plan is just your ambulance remaining. We went over your crime control. Your community center, your operating revenues is a hundred and sixty-eight, your expenditures are a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, and for the council letters new here, um, we get the funds coming through your hotel multiple tax that support your community and conference center, they're not supported by your general fund. Um, your ending fund balance is two hundred and forty-six. I'm trying to build this reserve fund out, because we do need to do a remodel of the restrooms, and so we've, we've tried to do it each year. Um, and so I'm hoping next year you'll have enough sitting in your general fund reserve to be able to do the remodels for the conference center restrooms. Um, community center expenditures are a hundred and sixty-five thousand. Uh, your street maintenance, we just budget for all of the street maintenance and try to get as many done in every given year. So we zero out, we don't leave an ending fund balance, because it can only be used for street maintenance, we just continue to, to do street maintenance projects. Your special revenues, um, are your grant fund, your building security, your child safety fund, your municipal court technology, your debt service and police forfeiture. Um, these are your, I know it's kinda hard to read, but these are your breakdowns of how people are paid, or the percentages of what they were paid, how they're paid out of. Um, funding, uh, this budget funds a hundred and seventeen positions. Out of that hundred and seventeen, it doesn't include your seven-hour-a-week library aide or your school crossing guard. Um, your salaries have been adjusted to current market, it does fund longevity. Um, it is proposing that you have, you pay for your medical insurance, your medical dental and life. Um, it does fund your retirement. City hall will be closed from December twenty-fourth through January the second. We will be taking two PTO days from the employees in order to accomplish this. Um, your budget, your budget hearing and formal adoption, we're planning is September the second. And formal adoption will be September the second on your tax rate as well.
Okay.
That concludes the budget presentation.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other questions or comments from either, um, my colleagues on the dais or in the, um, chambers? Yes, Mr. Yarnell, and we will go to the next agenda item, which is the rate.
I have a couple of questions about if we raise our tax rate by a nickel.
Okay, do you wanna wait until, until we get to the next one?
We're gonna get to the tax rate next.
Let me go ahead and read it, and then you can come on up, yeah. And we'll hear Dr. Caldera's presentation. Let's move then to seven point two, since there's no other questions on the budget. Presentation and discussion on an ordinance authorizing the proposed twenty twenty-five property tax rate and call for public hearing and adopt tax hearing. Continuation of August fifth, twenty twenty-five discussion. Um, and Dr. Caldera, if you'll, uh, continue that discussion.
Sorry.
Or do you want me to summarize it? I guess we could summarize it.
Okay. So the no new revenue, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, on August the fifth, we had just gotten the new rate on August fourth, so we didn't really have a chance to digest it. But even with the no new revenue rate, we were still forty-seven thousand dollars in the hole. And so, uh, we knew we had to increase that in order just to cover the deficit. So, um, anyway, we ended up going a penny more than the no new tax revenue rate, I believe, if that's.
That is correct.
Yes, okay.
So your no new revenue rate came in at point five zero five zero four zero, um, but left you a negative forty-eight thousand one ninety-three, roughly. Um, and so we, or one of the council members suggested that we go up an additional cent, which puts you sixty-three thousand seven sixty-six to the good.
And I had a question, because I thought, and I know it's not a science, but I always thought that when they, when they set the no new revenue rate, we should've gotten the same amount of money from one year to the next, but yet we were still forty-seven thousand dollars in the, in the hole, and why is that?
Well, Carol gave the explanation, it's a lengthy one, because it has to do with property values and.
All right, that's fine.
But we can send it to you, we answered it in the email.
Yeah, I just, it just kinda bothered me that we were still forty-seven thousand in the hole, instead of breaking even, you know, like, that's our goal.
Their estimations from the county, that you're not always gonna break even, they get as close as they can to the dollar amount, doesn't mean it's gonna be penny for penny.
But that's tied into the property evaluations.
Your evaluations of property.
Is that right, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Uh, yeah, sorry, lost track here.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go off on a tangent.
So then your voter approval rate, you could've gone all the way up to point five six, y'all are proposing point five one five zero four zero. Um, and so this is what your M and O and INS split would look like. Um, and so it would increase everybody's, or not everybody's, the average home is roughly about two hundred and thirty thousand. It would increase it by annually to an extra hundred dollars and twelve cents.
Excuse me, and that's annually, right? If you divide it by twelve, then it's how much per month?
So, um, this hundred dollars, what, there's two things working in this mathematical equation, okay? The rate itself, by going up the one cent over the no new revenue, is only gonna increase taxes, on average, sixty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. And you see a hundred dollars, and you say, well, what's the difference? Well, what, what, what's going on here, if you look, and you can't see it, I'm sorry, on the screen? It's going from tax year twenty twenty-four of a value of a home that is subject to tax of two hundred and twenty-four thousand three eighty-two. Okay, in tax year twenty twenty-five, it went up now by close to six thou, six thousand dollars, it's two hundred and thirty, six twenty. So that, that takes up the other amount that, that brings it up to a hundred dollars. So I just wanna make sure that the residents know that this one penny is not the result of this increase. Because the last time we talked, I said, hey, it's about sixty-nine dollars. But the difference is, because now we have a higher-valued property, so that's the difference. So just wanted to make that clear to everyone.
Right, and so then people are saying, okay, it's a double-edged sword, because you're saying the property evaluations are going down, but this is showing property evaluations actually going up. But where the big hit was on property evaluations was on your apartment complex, was on your commercial side. Um, and so we, we did see, uh, we did see a decline in residential property evaluations overall on average. But the average household still went up roughly six thousand two, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Um, and the county gives us that number, they, they give us the property evaluations, um, and then we take that property evaluations and we apply the, the tax rate, uh, tax rate to it for y'all.
Okay. All right.
Um, and so then essentially you'll adopt, you'll hold your public hearing and adopt your tax rate on September the second. Now I can answer your question.
Okay, and I just wanted to be sure, do the colleagues, my colleagues have any questions on the tax rate? Is that, everybody comfortable with that figure, that number? Okay, 'cause I just, yeah, if, I'm on the board, so, okay. Yes, Mr. Yarnell?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, you just mentioned something that I didn't quite catch, you said that the tax could go to point five six for something?
Without a vote.
Without a vote, you can go as high as point five six without a vote.
Without a vote, okay.
Without going to the ballot.
Without an election.
Without a rate.
Okay. My thought is, why don't we look at going at point five five? Get ourselves out of this hole a little bit more. Uh, it's going to be pennies a day on the taxpayer. Now, obviously, I'm over sixty-five, I understand that. But we paid our dues our entire life. But we can't let the city just continue to kick the can down the road, which has happened and got you all in this position, or got all of us in this position. So, my question is, you went to five five, point five five. Mr. Calculator, what would be the per-day raise?
I'd have to go and do that, I'd have to go do the math.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna say a couple of things. One, not that, that we wouldn't love the point five five, I, I think it's an unrealistic hit, because I do think you're gonna, gonna have to go out for a bond at some point.
Okay.
For public works and some of that, and so your tax rate is going to increase. We just haven't gotten there yet. So I don't wanna eat it up now, and then we go for a bond, and then we're at point six two or something crazy. And so that's why I'm, that's why I wanted the council to not have a, a deficit, of course, and so we, we presented an extra penny increase. Or half a cent increase, and then the council went to a penny increase. Um, and so that's, that's why I wasn't going for the fences.
Okay, so if we started at point five five, and you say we can't do that, let's talk about coming back down a penny or two, and, and get ourselves a little above what we've been talking about here with point five one? I'm sorry, I got figures everywhere. This thing hurts my head.
It's point five one, point five.
Five one, yeah.
Fifty-one point five is our suggested tax rate.
It troubles me that we can't even give our, our employees an award for service. Think about that. It's not a big expense, what does it cost to do that?
Well, I mean, we cut a lot of, so what I did is.
Oh, the, the council's not gonna get any food anymore, I mean, you know, we all, we all took a hit.
Or five thirty, or whatever time you come, and you stay here till nine o'clock, or whatever, at night?
Yeah.
I mean, we cut everything, I cut all the.
Yeah, we cut everything, Fiesta medals, everything, yeah.
Not the proper operation of a city. I mean, we could say, as citizens, we'll just let you starve, but do I wanna go in there and spend five hours at these meetings and not get beat?
Can I add something, Mr. Yarnell? The other thing that concerns me, and I know my colleagues, I, I remember Council Hile especially, is that it, on October first, our water and sewer rates are going to increase. And so we have, I'm, I'm looking at it globally.
I understand.
Too, so you, you know, and, and we're all gonna get hit. People on SAWs are, we have the sewer increase, but we, I just read last week, SAWs is, is also increasing water, sewer, and special projects. So we're all gonna get an increase. So, I don't know, I mean, you just, it's, it's a balancing act, I, I hear what you're saying, but.
Point five five is, he says is out of the question, but let's talk about point four, five four.
Okay, but, but did you hear what Dr. Caldera said? She's looking in the future.
I understand that.
For a bond issue, so that means that.
We can't be crumbling in the meantime.
Okay, all right, so, all right, Counselor Campos, let's see what you have to say.
We're trying to balance all, in, in my opinion.
Yes.
We're, we're trying to balance all of this. The, this exercise goes on every year.
Yes, it does.
Okay, and it gives us an opportunity to raise it incrementally a little bit, if needed. We're hoping at someplace down the line that we're also gonna get the increase in property values from the new developments, possibly.
Five years away or so?
Yeah.
And, and whether or not there, there's gonna be a rebound in the real estate market. So it's, it's hard to put us all together and saying, oh, well, let's go to five two, five three, all at one time this year. I think going up, so we're actually going up three cents.
For forty-eight, point four eight.
So the new, uh, no new revenue rate took it up two pennies, and then we're adding another one.
Right.
And so that's the, that's kinda the delicate balance that we're trying, I know you and I, and some of us here in the dais are over sixty-five, that we've, we're longtime residents, and you're right, we did pay our dues. But some of the younger taxpayers are saying, wait a minute, hey, I've, I've got some trouble at home, and I need some relief. And so that's what happened two councils ago, when they increased the exemptions.
Which was a big mistake, in my opinion.
Right, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Or maxed out at twenty percent, yeah.
So I'm not gonna say anything about that, but that's what happened. And so this is trying to just, let's, let's look at it every year, where do we need to make changes, and let's make those changes.
Well, let's talk about opinion I have, let's negotiate here. Okay, uh, what, what's the reason that the multifamily structures valuation has decreased?
Aging, they're aging, and then they went to the, they went to the county and said, my structure isn't worth. Um, we, when we got the listing, it essentially said they litigated a, a decrease in their property evaluations.
So the market value went down too?
Forty-six, a total of, I think for that one.
Forty-six million.
Yeah, it was total.
Forty-six million, yeah, this one.
Yeah.
So they haven't taken care of these properties. As I understand, looking at it from the outside the circle, these properties, these apartment complexes have been moved from one owner to the other owner to the other owner, and they drained it every penny they could. Every owner has done that, and they're now to the point where they're, they're a real problem.
That's a whole other issue.
I mean, the Delray thing, or whatever, that, that was a beautiful complex.
It was?
Yes, and, and now it's, people are, it's a mess. Okay, I understand, I don't, I don't sit up there, but I got.
It's, it's, yeah, it's not easy, it's, we're, like, like you say, it's a balancing act.
See, what's happened is, previous councils haven't taken the bull by the horns and done what was necessary. Plus, they've, they've reduced your rates, and they reduced the assessed values, and you can't. Please think about giving these employees an award, my gosh, we gotta come up with some way to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, this is a discussion item?
Just a discussion, so.
I'm not hearing any changes or any requests.
Everybody wants to keep it at point five one, point five, or five one five, is that correct? Okay, you wanna go around? Okay, Counselor Mersch, because you've heard from, uh, Mr. Yarnell, and, you know.
I wouldn't mind seeing what the surplus, I'm gonna say surplus, but what the additional revenue would be if we were at point five two and just go up another half cent.
So every, every penny is roughly a hundred thousand dollars.
So if we go a half, it would be fifty thousand.
So that would give us a total of a hundred and something thousand over our, our.
Hundred and eleven, or hundred and fifteen thousand.
Once you start crusting on the hundred thousand dollar mark, I would probably chuck everything you just said about police fire and, and then start adding the positions based on your staff utilization survey. The only reason I didn't approach adding a position in was because you don't have the dollars to do it. But once you start crusting on a hundred thousand dollars, I need to add three positions minimum to the fire department, and eventually you're gonna have to add an additional three. Um, so, um, you need another halftime body in your planning and zoning department, because they're, you know, they're living off of two and a half people right now. Um, but fire department, from a public safety standpoint, was what the staff utilization said that they needed. Um, they also recommended adding public work staff, as well as police, um, staffing, but in conversations with the residents, the fire department was the dire need at the moment. Um, so once you start crusting on an additional hundred thousand plus, that's when I start talking positions. So, we would, we just have to back, I mean, so if you're gonna go that direction, that's the direction I'm gonna pivot to, so y'all know.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Orozco, where are you coming down at?
Look, I wanted to tell Mr. Yarnell, we have bounced this back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, to, we turned blue. And we discussed this, of how much we get, do we raise it to this, or do we lower it to that? We came up to the conclusion, as Philip had indicated earlier, that other things are gonna be going up for our citizens, not just the water or the gas or the electricity, but, you know, also groceries and stuff, and as much as we would like to be, uh, proactive and think about the future and get those extra pennies in there, um, it's imperative that we take, take care of them as much as possible. So I'm okay with just leaving it, it's what we came up with, and we, we have other years, so we can go ahead and.
Well, we actually, last time, looked at actually only going up a half a cent, right?
My job was to make your budget as close as possible, so.
Right, and so that was only a nine thousand dollar plus, and so it was Counselor Mersch who said, well, I'd rather go up another penny. I just wanted to be sure all my colleagues were on the same page, because I know I had heard some concern over on my left, so I just wanted to be sure we're all good, feeling good about this, this rate. So, uh, I would wanna stay where we're at and not go up any more personally, Counselor.
I'm following this rate.
Yeah. And I know Counselor Heil.
I'm okay with this rate, because the young families are having problems buying food, and putting clothes in their kids, and paying the electricity. I hear it all the time from my neighbors. So, I'm uncomfortable making it any higher at this point.
Yeah, same here. And Counselor Bolton? Okay, very good. So we're good, I think, with that rate for the next council meeting. Okay, so now we're moving, unless there's anything else, Mr. Yarnell? Okay, very good. All right. All right, you've got a meeting set up, okay. Seven point-three, discussion and direction to staff on increased code and traffic enforcement. Dr. Caldera, this was been a hot topic.
So I'm gonna... I get to stand up for this one, because this one doesn't have a PowerPoint presentation. This kind of... So essentially, what ended up happening was, we had some discussion at the retreat. One of the bad things about the retreat, maybe in the future, we look at televising the retreat. It is a council meeting, so maybe that's what we decide to do. One of the reasons we did a retreat, it was time for the council and the manager to kind of get on the same page in the direction of the city. And so, that's what we've done in the past. And so, the council provides us direction on how heavy-handed they would like us to be in traffic and code enforcement. And the direction in the prior council was a little bit more warning-based compliance initiative versus issuing citations. And so, in discussions with this particular council at the retreat, it seemed that the majority of y'all wanted me to be a little bit more aggressive in writing citations. Once we say increased traffic enforcement, we want to see increased patrol out. I can't tell the officers, write a warning for this one. You write... The officers have officer discretion, as the city attorney will certainly tell you. I can't go to the officer and tell him, oh, change that to a warning. It doesn't work that way, nor can any of y'all. So once we tell them, hey, we want to see, not just neighborhood patrolling, we want to see increased traffic enforcement, because that's what we were hearing, that is increased traffic enforcement. That is making sure they're not blocking the sidewalks, making sure that we're writing speeding citations. And so, sorry. So that's... So we left the retreat, I think, pretty much on the same page of a little bit more aggressive approach, and I'm probably using the wrong terms, but a little bit more aggressive approach on code enforcement. And then it blew up, right? Everybody came on next door. I was getting a bunch of calls. I had people meeting me in the lobby here. We had calls daily coming into Jennifer, people yelling, you know, at the court staff. Then we had people show up at the coffee. We had people come to the next council meeting saying that, you know, I was turning into the previous regime, and, you know, it was Nazi Germany. I mean, we heard all kinds of different comments. And so, I wanted it on the record that it wasn't me as the city manager or the police chief going out there and saying Gestapo, or whatever the last term was used, that we were out there just doing it on our own. It was the direction of this body to have a more aggressive approach. And I'm not saying that we're, you know, going on private property and towing vehicles, or peeking into people's windows, or going into people's backyards. We're not doing that. We're enforcing the code. We're writing more citations than giving warnings. I pulled the numbers for the blocking of the sidewalks. We wrote seventy-six citations for blocking of the sidewalks and sixteen warnings during that timeframe. And so, you know, that is probably more than we've written ever for that type of violation. And so, again, it was... That was the direction we kind of heard. I did warn y'all multiple times during the council meeting that y'all were gonna have some fallout if we decided to go with that approach. I think I said it two or three times in that meeting, that that could possibly be the repercussions. I mean, you can call... I mean, now's the time to speak up if that wasn't the case. And so, I just need to know if that's the continuation of the way you want to go, is we give the ten-day period for the code violation, rewrite the citation. If the officers are out, they have the discretion to determine whether or not to write a warning or citation. They're leaning more towards citation. The other thing that came up was that I was trying to make up the deficit in the budget with these tickets. We get roughly forty dollars per ticket issued. The rest of it goes to the state. So, you know, it's one of those things that I'm not... Yes, we'll see an increase, or for those that come in and pay the citations, because we'll have a whole portion of them that won't come in and pay that citation. But for those that, you'll see a small uptick, but you're not gonna make up your budget deficit with writing citations, so.
Okay, yes, Counselor Campos.
So, Dr. Caldera, I appreciate what you're doing in this explanation. And I want to say that when I go visit and campaign door-to-door in the multiple neighborhoods that I've visited, one of the biggest complaints is people are speeding through my neighborhood. People are cutting through my neighborhood to go around the speed bumps. I've complained in public multiple times that I believe the traffic on Evers Road is going way too fast. Okay, I am the one, not any other counselor, I'm the one that asked, hey, I think we need additional traffic enforcement. How that you accomplish that, that's not my... We're a policymaker. And so, I was asking that to be done. So I want that to be on the record, that it was me who initiated the traffic. I think in our last meeting, Counselor Orozco, he was commending the officers, and I don't want to put words in your mouth on the number of stops. We've got to get the speed under control in this community. That's one of the biggest complaints I hear.
Right. Well, I know we talked about code and wanting to make our community look nicer. And I know Counselor Marsh walks, and I walk, and I have to tell this story. So I'm out walking, and so I turn in a whole bunch of people on my street, and guess what? They came to my house, and we got a citation. So, it, you know, I mean, I had to laugh, but it's true. I mean, we're all in the same boat. And that was on the, you know, cars on the... Yeah, did you get one too? I mean, so, I mean, we're all...
Nobody was free from it. I mean, I wasn't...
No, nobody's free from it, that's what I'm saying. And we're all in this together. We all want our community to look nicer. But I have gotten multiple, multiple calls from people going, but Mayor, somebody got a ticket on this street in my neighborhood, and, you know, she doesn't have a job, and it was for blocking the sidewalk. And so I just said, go to the judge and talk to the judge.
And there's community service options as well, and there's other...
Exactly, so, yeah, there's other options. So don't just say, oh, it was me. Go and talk to the judge and see if you can look it up.
Yeah, the other one I've heard is, is we were only blocking this much, and so...
Oh, that's a safety issue, because guess what? I'm a walker, you're a walker. We have to go out in the street when you can't go on your sidewalk, so that's important. Yes, Counselor Marsh, go ahead.
Well, I do want to say that I think code enforcement, traffic enforcement, is important, because I don't know why we have rules if we don't intend to hold people to those rules. And when people start to get sloppy or lazy in the way that they stop at a stop sign, or park their car, or whether they cut their grass or not, I agree. It reduces the pride in our city. It reduces everybody's property value, their safety. And so, I think that we have codes and ordinances and laws to keep people safe, to keep our neighborhoods looking nice, and that if we have them, we need to enforce them. So I don't regret having enforcement.
Well, I was gonna say, and on the flip side, we've gotten compliments. Even though somebody's gotten a ticket, they say, thank you very much. The officer was, you know, very polite, and I was speeding, you know, that kind of thing. So, that's on the flip side, yes. Counselor Heil.
I agree with the tickets on Evers and on Heedner. But one of the problems with the neighborhoods I have had, because I walk to all the time, I have had more people stop me and be angry at me. And they'll say, did you report us? And I'm... And what is done? It has pitted people against people, and it's not... It's not... I don't think it's something that we need. Sometimes, we have short driveways. Where are people supposed to park? I have no problem if somebody parks and I have to walk around, because there's not that much traffic on the streets. And that's one thing that is really... And I know some people have gotten tickets, and then they've gone out all around the neighborhood to see if anybody else is over the driveway. Did you do that?
Well, that's right. That's what they do. That's what they do. They...
And they're in the neighborhood to see if they can get...
Yeah.
And then, it just...
Consistency and fairness.
It just...
And that's exactly it. I told y'all in the meeting, I can't... I'm not going to cherry pick and just pick one home. If you're telling me we want citations written for blocking of the sidewalk, I'm not just gonna go to Mrs. Bolton's house and write her a ticket. And I'm not even out there. It's our officers that are out there.
But there are times when it is, it's dangerous. At the corner of Forest Meadow and Sunlight, there are people that would be parking, and it would block you from being able to see oncoming traffic. So it was literally a dangerous situation. So that I can understand. But two o'clock in the morning, someone's blocking a little bit of the driveway?
So we don't really have a choice. So once you tell me blocking of the sidewalk, it's in violation of the Texas... It's not our code. It's a Texas penal code, a Texas local government code. And so if an officer is out and sees somebody, he has the autonomy to write either a warning and/or a citation, or to keep going.
Okay, Counselor Orozco.
Thank you, Mayor. When I gave a pat on the back to the police department for seeing nine tickets be... or stops, they already had increased their presence there, even before it became to light. And so, and as far as policing ourselves, in Pavona Place, we have a homeowners association. And we try to police ourselves as much as possible. And when code compliance goes to Pavona, it's because a neighbor had a concern. Not so much a complaint, but a concern, and that's why they go in there. I think that the police department is doing a great job. As far as code compliance, I think that they're doing the best. And I don't think they're going and checking behind, you know, the alleys and stuff like that to make sure everybody is compliant. You know, just give a police department a chance to just try to work things out. And I don't have any complaints, because I just don't live where you guys live, if that makes any sense.
Got your own HOA that...
And even though there's somebody in the association that's trying to get rid of the deed restrictions for that, and put it on you, I said, no, you know, they got enough to do. But as far as the police are concerned, I think they're doing a great job, even before it came to light about them giving tickets.
Right. Well, I remember you saying, wanting... Because I was here also when we had a heavy-handed approach. So, we're gonna get backlash, so...
And that's what I wanted kind of on the record, is like, y'all are the policymakers. If you say you want increased enforcement, we're gonna do increased enforcement. But I'm gonna do it within the bounds of the law. I'm not gonna go on people's private property. I'm not gonna go in... I've told y'all, there's many times y'all turn in complaints with people's backyards. And I tell y'all, sorry, I'm not peering over without a warrant. We're not going back there. I can't use drone footage. We're not flying over Leon Valley with a drone. Same thing with dead trees. If they're not a public issue, there are certain things we can and can't do in regards to private property. And so, I think in the previous administration, it really went from one... A pendulum swing, from one to the other. And so even though you're asking me for increased enforcement, I'm still trying to stay in the middle as much as I can. But because we had such an outrage, and I was getting people calling over here, and they thought it was me, that I've been here long enough, that I think I can just become queen, and I can just do whatever I want. I mean, I've got told all kinds of things over the court, from the coffee to, you know, as recent as last week. And so I just wanted the public to hear the conversation from the dais, that it wasn't just me going out and doing increased code enforcement.
Okay, well, I think...
All right, thank you.
I think you've got unanimity on the council, just to continue and make our city better, so.
Okay.
All right, announcements by the mayor and council members. I just, as I said at the last meeting, I was gonna go to the Bear County Town Hall meeting, which I did on August the 12th, and it was a very, very good meeting. We... I can honestly say we are so fortunate in Leon Valley to have a good, positive relationship with the county, and they support us in so many ways. And we had just received, a day or two before that, a grant for CDBG grant, five-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars to improve... To put a new sewer main improvement on Locker Lane. So I thanked Justin Rodriguez and Judge Sakai for that support. But their tax rate is twenty-nine point-nine cents per one hundred, and it hasn't been raised in ten years, at least, and they're gonna stay within that rate as well. Even though Judge Sakai said it's a very tight budget, why? Because of the federal cuts. They don't know what's gonna happen with CDBG and Medicaid, and, I mean, you just name it. They just are really, really concerned about money that they had relied upon, and they're not gonna have it, or they're gonna have a reduced amount, so they'll see that. Eighty percent of their operating budget comes from their property tax as well. But the big issue was the November fourth referendum. Have y'all been hearing about that? And that's the Spurs Arena, and it's the improvement of the AT... Or South... It's not... It's the Frost Bank Center. It used to be AT&amp;T, and then it was Frost Bank. So the Judge Sakai and the commissioners, via a vote of four to one, are putting a referendum on the November fourth ballot, and there's two propositions. Proposition A raises two-hundred-million dollars from a tourist tax, which is hotel and rental, car rentals, and it's one-point-seven-five percent to two percent increase. And so the judge gave an example on a two-hundred-dollar hotel bill, it's gonna be a fifty-cent increase. Yes.
The Senator of Stock Show Rodeo would actually like to have a representative come to one of our meetings to present information about this.
Yeah, I've already asked him. Yeah, you and I are on the same wavelength. They're gonna come in October, I think I've already asked. Yeah, so they'll come the second meeting in October, right before the early vote, so that we can continue to educate. But I will write this up also for the lion's roar. But also, it's not just renovating the AT&amp;T Center or the Frost Bank. It's also Joe Freeman Coliseum and all their grounds. Yeah, and they're gonna totally take it over. That's two-hundred-million dollars. But what I didn't know is, do you know how much they raised in the one month of the rodeo? Three-hundred-and-seventy-five-million dollars. I was shocked. I was shocked. So the powers that be that run that, the rodeo committee, they're ready, willing, and able to look that whole complex and rethink it to where it's a ongoing venue, not just a one-time venue.
Right. I just got my twenty-year award for being on the horse show committee with rodeos. So I mean, that's something I'm involved in.
So that's the first vote, and the second vote is gonna be raising up to twenty-five percent or no more than three-hundred-and-eleven-million for the Spurs new arena. So they've got it capped. And again, the commissioner and the judge said, no property taxes. This is all venue tax. And that's how they funded these arenas in the past. So they're using that same method this time around. So, anyway, he convinced me that this was a win-win. He said, I know people think that the Spurs will never leave. He said, yeah, they're gonna leave. This is a business. And if we don't pass this, he said, there's Las Vegas that's got a brand-new arena, ready, willing, and able to take the Spurs in. So, anyway. But I will have them here at the October meeting, for sure. So, and then, last but not least, Labor Day is coming up, and summer's over. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Labor Day. Don't labor too much, and be safe. And we'll see you on September the second. That's it for me. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Campos.
So I just want to remind everybody, we have three bids coming in for the L Verde Water and Drainage Improvements on August the 28th. The same day, Cami Way Sewer Improvements, and the 2025 Water Main Improvements Projects. All three of those bids are coming in on the 28th. I do want to thank Dr. Caldera on that Bear County CDBG grant on Locker Lane. We're gonna get five-hundred-and-ninety thousand. But my recollection is that we applied for something a little less than that, and you reached out to them to say, hey, can you pay the remainder, and they agreed to it. And I want to thank you and acknowledge that great accomplishment and say thank you, okay? The other thing is that I want to recognize the fire department for collecting and distributing four-hundred-and-thirty-nine pounds of non-perishable goods. Most of the donations were done by the Northwest Senior Citizens that meet at our civic center. And when the firemen in EMS go out to the homes on the run, they'll sometimes run into families who are in need of different food, non-perishable foods, as well as baby things. So they're able to provide that. So, great job. So, great job. Chief, I wish you would add, Police Chief Gonzalez, I wish you would add more to yours so that I could highlight it, rather than go into a link. You need more narrative, so I can highlight you. And I do the last, you know, I wanna highlight Regina, I see her back there, and just encourage everybody to go to the library's website. There's a number of programs between now and the end of the month. Some, they look fabulous, and your website is beautiful. So congratulations, and I want everybody to go to that website. So thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Yes, Counselor Heil. Counselor Heil.
I read in the paper yesterday that Representative Ray Lopez is not running again.
Yes.
And that's unfortunate. He was so good.
Yes, yes, he was. But it'll be a competitive race, let me tell you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank y'all very much, really appreciate it. So Dr. Caldera, you're next.
I think I've spoken enough for this.
Okay, well, we will, I know what you'll say, I already know. Just see my report outside.
And it's online.
And it's online. Okay, so thank you. Thank you again. And again, I didn't thank you properly, or Carol, and your whole team for the work that we've, that's gone into this budget.
When y'all adopt it, I will shoot off some.
Well, I know, but it's still, it's a work in progress, and I appreciate the.
It's really all the staff. I get up here and present it, but it's their hard work.
But it's been a real, it's been a labor of love. I mean, we really, really digested this and changed, and heard from everybody, and I like that. I really like that. So yes, Betty.
Also, didn't we get something from Austin that we've got a no-kill designation? That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, so Austin Pets Alive, we finally reached no-kill status, which I thank you.
That's great.
Thanks real good in the animal.
Wonderful, thank you for that. Okay, consent agenda, 10.1 to 10.6. Anyone want to pull any of those to discuss? Any of my colleagues? And if not, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, they approve the consent agenda, 10.1 through 10.6.
I'd like to second that motion.
All right, you bet. So we have a motion by Counselor Orozco, and a second by Counselor Mersch, to approve consent agenda items 10.1 through 10.6. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. Thank you so much for that. All right, moving to our last agenda item, 11.1, at, let's see, what time is it?
9:08.
9:08. I always like to keep the time. Presentation, discussion, and possible action to award the fiscal year 2026 group insurance bids for employee medical, dental, and life insurances provided by Gallagher Benefit Services. And Lisa, are you going to present?
I'm gonna do it, because I changed her PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Because I added it to the budget, so.
Okay, very good.
So we're gonna be taking a look at the medical, dental, and life. And so essentially, we met with the broker, Blue Cross Blue Shield came in at increasing your rate from 783 to 936. So it would've had a 19.5% impact on your budget, we couldn't support it. So we went out to bid, and United Healthcare is the one that came in, so we're making the recommendation to go with United Health. They went from your current base rate of 783 to 819. You currently pay for dependent care coverage, not the 783, towards dependent care coverage, you pay 818 for dependent care coverage. So we're asking that you pay 881.52, and the staff would only see a increase in employee family coverage of $28. If you don't, and we leave it, sorry, at the 819, you would only subtract 819 from the 2,140, and so then they would be responsible for the full amount, the 1258.87. And so essentially, what we're asking for y'all to do is pay for dependent care coverage, 881. And so then, employee child would decrease by $122, employee spouse would decrease by 78 cents, and employee family would only go up to an extra $28.
Okay.
Dental went down with United Health from 2611 to 2572, and then your basic life state the same at $1.30. So you're looking at a total increase of 7.4%, which is part of the budget presentation I just presented. So the council would be contributing roughly about 14% for dependent care coverage, which I think is starting to be a little bit competitive with the cities that cover 100% dependent care coverage, or 50% dependent care coverage, and they won't have as much of an impact. Because we aren't giving a cost of living, we do have market increases, and just as a reminder, not everybody's getting a market increase. Some people are getting zero, some people are getting some, some people are getting just very little, and some people are getting a lot. And so my goal with health insurance is for that, whatever little increase they have, not to be eaten up by their health insurance coverage. So our recommendation tonight is that you pick United Health, pay the base rate of 819, and then 881 for dependent care coverage, dentistry at 2572, and life insurance at $1.30.
Okay, very good. I was, also, that summary sheet, United Healthcare also has less co-pays and stuff, which I thought was really good, you know? So they're saving them on that out-of-pocket, so. Anyway, okay, are there any questions for Dr. Caldera on this? You wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Campos, and a second by Counselor Orozco, to approve regular agenda number 11.1 regarding the fiscal year 2026 group insurance bids for employees' medical, dental, and health insurance as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion does carry. All right, thank you. Moving then to agenda item number 12. Does anyone have a future agenda item that you would like to address? The council to address? Okay. Seeing, yes, I had one thing that I wanted to add. Go ahead.
So I was not adding, I know we mentioned about the PD being on, we had it scheduled for this agenda, as promised. However, we felt that this agenda was pretty heavy, and so we moved it to the next agenda. So I don't want people to think that we forgot about it.
And this is not adding, but I just wanted a question, because we've been talking about the water and sewer rates are going up on October 1st. Are we sending a notification, a postcard out to all the citizens?
It went into everybody's, it started going out in everybody's water bill already, but I'll double-check with Melinda and see if we're doing a postcard. I don't.
Okay, what about the citizens on SAWs? Because are, we're gonna see an increase in the sewer?
Yeah. Let me, let me get with Melinda and see.
I just don't want anybody to be shocked.
Get caught off-guard, yes.
Okay, very good. So thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
And just an update, Dr. Caldera, on the mailboxes.
Oh, yeah.
In Pavona, I know that you have sent an email out, some inquiries that you've been getting from citizens. They're gonna meet again, they have decided to purchase them, they just need some legal advice on how to proceed, as far as getting bids and, and awarding that. They're gonna meet this week, and I'll keep you guys abreast of what goes on.
Good, all right. Because we did get an email from one of your neighbors.[1781.88]